Good evening and welcome to the March 23rd, 2016 meeting of the Montomoy Regional School Committee. Called the meeting to order at 7:02. The first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes of March 9th, 2016.
Come on.
Second. Any corrections, additions?
I didn't get a copy beforehand. Don't you should get a copy and review beforehand?
They will email them. They're part of our pack.
I missed it. Okay. I just missed it.
Would you like additional time to be able to read them? We can postpone the meet.
Would you mind?
Vote.
Thank you.
Postpone the vote in 45 minutes until our next meeting.
Thank you, considering that was my fault.
Next on the agenda is the spotlight, and it's what's happening at Chatham Elementary School. Best part of the meeting, right here.
That's right. Good evening. My name's Christian Woodall.
My name is Jason Holmes. We are part of the Chatham Elementary School Student Council. We are here to share what's been happening in CES since the last time we were here. First, the student council has had its second all-community event on Sharkfoot Character Trade Monster. At this event, we presented over 250 thank you letters written by CES fans to Dennis Yarmuth, Deputy Chief of Arms. Deputy Chiefs of Arms include these letters and care packages to troops serving the country that are stationed all over the world. Thank you to Ms. Milanowski who connected our community with his organization.
Second, the student council helped Miss Griffith box up and ship all the books for the school in the Bahamas that was devastated by Hurricane Joaquin. We shipped over 14 boxes of our salvaged texts to the school with letters from our student council. Thank you to the school committee for having us salvaging the books. And the PTO and the CES teachers and staff for raising funds to pay for the shipping. Last month, we also celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday with a spirit. Each day had a theme based on a book written by Dr. Seuss. On Monday, we had Crazy Hat Day for 500 hats of Bartholomew Puddings. On Tuesday, each grade level wore a different color for my many-colored days. Wednesday, Dr. Seuss's birthday, we all wore stripes and had guest readers from the Chatham Police and Fire departments that read their favorite Seuss books to the classrooms. Thursday was Crazy Sock Day for the fox in socks. And Friday was the Montomoy Shark Spirit Day for a Ray for a Different Door Day. The same week, we also had a book drive where students brought a book and took a book. This was such a success, we are keeping the drive going. Thank you to Chief Paulina, Sergeant Massey, Lieutenant Anderson, Officer Goddard, and Carver Intergestino.
Last week was the PTO book fair. The PTO sold $7,886, which beat last year's total by $700. The corn drive raised $579, and we received a donation from the Chatham Ladies Book Club, so on and on. This breaks down to 1,577 books sold, equaling 283,860 minutes of reading. Thank you to Mrs. Bascarelli and the PTO, and also for Mr. Bob Stake, a local author who came Tuesday night to read his new book, Beechey and the Author's Day. Also, each Monday, the whole school is now doing recycling. Next group, my mom and dad, Mr. and Mrs. Holmes, are going to the state DEP to make a 21 recycling wins and an accomplishment.
Just one more note from 4th grade. We are getting excited about all the upcoming events. The field up... We are getting excited about all the upcoming events, including the field trips to the Heritage Museum and the Boston Science Museum. We are also looking forward to the events to get to know Montomoy Middle School. Thank you for having us present today.
I have a question for the two of you. You're on the student council. How many kids are on the student council at Chatham Elementary? Do you have a vague idea?
Probably about 40.
Forty? Forty. That's a lot of kids. And are you both 4th graders?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. You did a fabulous job.
You're welcome.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody wish to make a comment to the school committee?
Donna Richardson, Harwich, and hopefully I want to become a member of the Montomoy School Committee come the next election. And I have one question. In an effort to learn all I can about the schools, I would like to attend the school council meetings, but I've looked all over the website and I can't find the dates and times of all these meetings are held. So I was wondering where I can look and find out so I can attend these meetings.
For Chatham Elementary, it's under our heading of our school on the website. And if you go into About Us, there's a tab for School Council, and all the agendas and the minutes are there.
I have a question.
If you contact the school principals, they'll be able to help.
Great.
Tell them we told you. Any other questions? Next on the agenda is student representatives' report.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Great. So just some happenings at the high school lately. First, we had a very successful chili competition last week. Red's Restaurant took home the prize. And our very own athletic director took third place, Mr. Case. Also, speaking of Mr. Case, we have had a really good start to our spring sports. We started practice on Monday. And we're also having a banquet to honor our winter athletes on the 28th, so that'll be nice. Also, Mr. Martin and Mr. Case are taking 48th and 9th graders to the Celtics game on April 6th. Also tonight, the seniors hosted a spaghetti dinner at Brax to raise money for our senior cruise that will go on the first week of June. We also had a very successful play this past weekend, "Adam's Family." I know some people from the community even wrote in to the Friday Focus to say how great it was, so that was really nice. Finally, the Junior Promis tomorrow at La Quasette. If anyone wants to see all the juniors in their glory at La Quasette, the grand march is at 4:30 tomorrow. And that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thanks, my friend.
Oh, sorry.
That play, I think several of us watched with others.
Yeah.
The novel.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, yeah.
I hope their prom goes off just as well.
Oh, sure will. They're very excited. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, recognitions.
Yeah, again, I reiterated when Sharon said the play, that was probably my favorite high school play that I've ever seen. I just, I loved the humor, I thought the singing and acting was spot on. I loved particularly Uncle Fester. That character just, I thought was great. In your packets, I have a few pages that share with you some of the grants, or the many grants that our communities have provided to staff that we have. See, there's a top one that clarifies what the Art of Charity is doing for our schools. So, Montomoy Regional School District is grateful for the generosity and support from the Art of Charity. Their mission's been to support participation in artistic and cultural programs and other activities in the schools. And to date this school year, they have provided $28,387,000 support. So I greatly appreciate that. And that has, you know, been to take the entire middle school students to Mary Poppins, to plays, to trips to the zoo. And then also included in your packet is just teacher by teacher of various different community partners that have supported different initiatives within our schools. So at the middle school, between Cape Cod 5, the Chatham Cultural Council, the Harwich Cultural Council, the Friends of Chatham Waterways, the Friends of Pleasant Bay, the Harwich Garden Club, the Nauset Garden Club, NOAA, and the Stars Grant, to date, there's been $39,745 worth of grant support that teachers have gotten in the classrooms. At the high school, again, Art of Charity, Cape Cod 5 mini-grants, the Harwich Cultural Council, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, the Garden Club of Harwich, and the Art of Charity, and Cape Cod, or Cape Cod and Islands Workforce Investment Board. There's another $11,374 that has afforded different educational initiatives. And then in our elementary schools, between the Cape Cod 5 charitable trust, Nauset Garden Club, the Chatham Cultural Council, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, Big Yellow School Bus, the Chatham PTO, and the Art of Charity, there's another $18,395 worth of support for a number of different endeavors in the classroom. So I really can't thank the different community partners who are helping support great things happening in our classrooms.
Comments? Move on to reports and discussions. First up is the Mass Audubon Home Committee.
Well, I'm very excited to introduce a new partnership. We have here two people from the Chatham Conservation Foundation in partnership with Mass Audubon and the Montomoy Middle School. They are going to be building a vernal pool on their property next to our property, and they've asked us to partner with this. So I'd like to introduce Jackie Meany and Matt Cannon, who will talk a little bit about the project.
Hi. Jackie Meany, Chatham, and Matt and I are here representing the Chatham Conservation Foundation. We want you to know that we are very happy that we are able to support this very interesting and exciting project. I think you all got copies at some point of what the project is all about. We are doing this in partnership with Mass Audubon Long Pasture and the Montomoy Regional Middle School. This all started, I guess, a couple of years ago when Ian Ives, who's with Mass Audubon, did a presentation at our annual meeting talking about the spade-footed toad and how there was the loss of critical habitat for that little toad. And how at Mass Audubon Long Pasture, they had built man-made vernal pools. First year, you see the pool. At the end of the third year, it looks like the most natural thing you've ever seen. And it's kind of like, you build it, they come. So we started to think, wouldn't that be exciting if we could use a piece of our property that the foundation owns to do something like that? And lo and behold, Matt was able to discover that the foundation owns a piece of property that abuts the middle school. So lo and behold, here we are. I'll let Matt tell you a little bit more about the project, but we're very excited about it. And we've been working with the teachers, and I think the kids have gotten presentations from Ian, and they're about to be built, so.
Thanks, Jackie. Thank you, and I will be very brief. But I wanted to say that one of the biggest reasons for this is busing costs. I work at the Harwich Conservation Trust as well. We try to engage as many volunteers as possible, get them outside. A couple of years ago, I reached out to some teachers and tried to get them to vernal pools out in the field in both towns. It's really hard to get money for busing costs. So we kind of thought, this is no-brainer, we'll bring the pool to the school. So that's kind of what we did. We will be building them on April 4th and 5th. Those are the construction days. Tom Bebehauser, who's in your pamphlet there, he's a restoration ecologist. He's read many books on restoring wetlands. He will be flying up for those two days from Kentucky and advising all the work that goes on. And some of the students, I think, will be involved in minor construction, just of actual putting the tarp lines down and staking them around the edges. They won't be near any machinery, but they can help with the project, use some math skills. And long-term, we hope, it'll be kind of part of the curriculum for citizen science.
Any questions?
Any question?
I have questions. What are the geotextile pads made of?
They're fish-shaped liners. I don't know the exact material.
It talks about liners made out of plastic, and it talks about geotextile pads, but it doesn't tell what the geotextile pads are made of.
All I know is that they're... Sir?
Not in here, anyway. I couldn't find it.
I know they're fish-shaped liners. I can give you the company that we're buying them from and get back to you with more specifics.
I think it's a great idea. My only concern would be with the plastic liner, what happens when that starts to break down?
They've been building these for this particular person I know has built these and with schools for how long? For a very long time. There are like three or four of them at Mass Audubon Long Pasture that have been in for, I think, five years.
Yeah, I'm understanding that it's about 100-year lifespan.
Yeah.
So after the 100 years, I'm not sure, but we've got a ways.
Well, I guess my concern would be that there would be, you know, puncturing in between, and then it does start to degrade before that. And I've seen farms that use the same material. It's probably not as thick as what you're using for the vernal pool. But plastic degrading, I don't know that it's great for the environment. I love the vernal pool idea. I think it's great. Would be any way to do it without a plastic liner?
These are fish-shaped liners, industry scale, so I'm not exactly sure what negative impacts they would have.
I guess I would be concerned about the dioxins that leach out of plastic, any kind of plastic.
We haven't, Ian, we haven't...
We can probably get that information from Ian Ives, who is the person working with Mass Audubon, who's kind of spearheading this with the schools. He's worked with Tom extensively. I don't know the answer to that question. We would have to touch base back with Ian. I should have brought the book that they have put together on this, but I didn't think to do that this evening, I'm sorry. But we can certainly check into that and get back to you.
This isn't on our school property, though. This is on the town's property. So it's what you guys are doing on your property.
It is.
We're just helping out with that. So you have to go through your own process for what you put onto your property.
Exactly. And we have gone before the Conservation Commission in Chatham, and we've gotten approval. So it's too bad that Ian isn't here. This was the one night that he couldn't make it. But his presentation is just, I mean, if you can see, it becomes just a part of the natural landscape. You would never know that this was a man-made pool. And there are going to be two. We were fortunate to be able to raise enough money to do two pools. One for the little spade-footed toad, which is shallow, and then a deeper one for things like the spotted salamander and the fairy shrimp and the wood frogs. And anyway, so it's, you know... And they've been building them all over, Tom Bebehauser, all over the country. And to the best of my knowledge, with kids in mind and schools, there haven't been any problems that we're aware of with that.
Can I just say one more thing to answer your question? I think if we couldn't use, if we were not to use a liner, we would have not used a liner. It's, if we could dig a vernal pool to groundwater and be natural, we would have. But the upland next door doesn't really allow for that. So we try our best, but we think balancing citizen science and kids getting involved is more of a pro than the liner problem.
Just thank you for considering just the idea of bringing it to the school. And I just love it for hands-on learning. I think it's great.
It's great. I think there are so many parts of the curriculum that it'll be important for. And math skills, science skills, the kids get to leave the classroom and they're actually dealing and learn the importance of critical habitat and the fact that we're losing a lot of it and the fact that they can participate in bringing that back and bringing in colonies of all of these species that need that kind of habitat. And they get to do monitoring. They build, if you've read it, they build these little traps around the edge. So they go out and they pick up whatever's in the trap, and they find out what's going in and what's coming out. I mean, I just, for us, we thought it was just a great experience for the kids and for the school. And as I said, we were just extremely lucky in that that piece of property is right there.
Works really well because the piece of property is right there.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the High School Program of Studies.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Bridgefield will be sitting at PowerPoint. I want to present. We're real excited to present our program of studies tonight and kind of bring it to life for you. And in high school, if you ever asked me, Captain of the football team, I've got a program of studies and exciting, and the same line. You'd mock me. But so to bring it to life, I had to bring people a little more interested in myself to come and help me present tonight. And I think you'll appreciate that. So I was thinking, how do I get a small pool to start and get them interested in exciting as my staff, make it equitable? So I said, I'll start with a real small sample and build. So I said, anybody that's better-looking and smarter than me, come on forward. And everybody but one teacher came up. And I hurt my self-esteem, but at least it was one. So I went over to him and I said, well, why aren't you up here? He says, because I'm smarter than you, better-looking, I'm more athletic. I said, stop right there and get up here. So then I tried the truth, and I said, how many people would like to volunteer to come and present to the school committee at 7 o'clock Wednesday night, the night before the prom? And no disrespect, but nobody came forward. So then I pulled rank and said, anybody contractually obligated as department heads to be there, please step forward. And so we've got these wonderful people here tonight. But in all honesty, this has been a conversation we had. And I've never seen a school, typically how I see a school present a program of studies is to give the document to the school committee, and the principal would come up and highlight some important things, which I will do. And then ponder, ask some questions, and then follow up questions when you had some time to digest it. But I thought it was real important that we had, as we were talking with our teachers and students, that we were so proud of this program of studies because it reflects our emerging values as a school and as a culture, which is what a difference a year makes and what such a good place we're in to make some of these adjustments and fine-tune this and bring it to life. So I think what you're going to see tonight, some of the changes we've made, some of the adaptations we've made, is to make this thing really special for our kids and our teachers. The first bullet point I have there for my talk is Built to Last. Because I think we've started to establish some cornerstones of courses, course offerings, opportunities, and how we provide them to kids after looking at data, living this thing for two years, that will act as a staple moving forward. So each year, we certainly will tweak it, but we really have a good foundation here, unlike we had the last two years. The format for tonight, I've kind of glossed over a little bit, is I've asked each department to highlight changes, additions, subtractions in the program of studies. And what was really cool, it came out kind of organically, is they all worked very hard to do this and took a lot of pride in this. And I want to thank them publicly for the hard work above and beyond they did with this because I was blown away with what I got. I had my own notes, and they came up with some things after talking to their teachers and their kids in their class and put this thing. And not only that, everyone sent their own different kind of PowerPoint. So I asked my administrative assistant to kind of compile it, and I just thought she was going to cut and paste everything into one nice clean PowerPoint. But what impressed her was that everyone spent so much time in creating a pretty cool PowerPoint individually. You'll see that tonight, it's a collage of the different departments, and they'll be able to come up and talk to us. We wanted to keep their uniqueness and individuality, so that was really cool. So they'll be coming up and talking at the end, or while, depends, you know, we can answer any question we have, certainly, but we will allow for time at the end to do so. Couple of points I want to highlight is aesthetically, consistency of the document. These are things that sometimes you take for granted, but when we really got to roll up our sleeves and look at this document, we talked about wanting it to be user-friendly for the consumer, the kids, the parents. Little things like not having a table of contents, we now do. Very easy to find. Okay, I want to go to the math department, page this. We didn't have that before. Grids, you'll see some really nice visuals. Each department has them. You see some highlighted tonight, which break down every grade, 8 through 12, with a nice visual grid on the courses that are available for those grades. Now visually, you can just go to that department and kind of get a good picture. Okay, this is the course my son or daughter needs to take to be successful. Instead of wading through all those documents or going online and going through all those pictures, pages. So I think you'll appreciate the grids. They're very powerful. The year versus semester. We've talked a lot about, you know, having things when people looked at a course, sometimes in the body of the course, it would say it's a year-long or a semester-long. You'll see in this new document very clearly and consistently through all courses, it will tell you what grades the course is available to right on the top in bold, and it will tell you whether it's a year-long or a semester course. A little thing, but very user-friendly to someone surfing through all that information. And then the last thing is a conversation we've had here last year with the school committee about being truly transparent in what we offer, what we have. This is a real mean, mean program of studies where, after looking at the data of what we ran for the last two years, what kids chose, we feel that we're offering things this year that we will run. And what we did to do that in a small school like this, and not having as many teachers as a big school, but providing the opportunities for the kids, we were able to offer courses that will run this year, then their partner will run the following year, and then like that, so that kids can get an 8 and 9. If they don't get a 10, 11, so they can get both courses. And that's clearly delineated in all the courses. If that course isn't running this year, it's very clear in that document. And it's very clear, and we made it bold and upfront on page 5 of the document, that elective courses, truth be told, if they don't fill up, which we think they will this year because of all the work we've done upfront, that they will not run. I think that's important to let people know. The last one is opportunities for all. My big thing as a high school principal is that every single child that comes in there has an opportunity to succeed, to have fun, and to grow and to get better. Wherever they are, wherever they're starting, it doesn't matter to me. They all, they share these opportunities. So these are some things that reflect our values that you'll find in here tonight. The business courses. And this is talking about listening to the community last year, listening to the parents. You know, we have a very strong businesses on the Cape, and we felt that was important. We refined it, we redid it. You'll see that it's under the math department now. It's taught by a certified math teacher, so it can have math graduating credit. Very powerful. It's not going anywhere now. So we didn't have that. It was by itself. You'll see that. That's implemented. We also have a few courses, electives also throughout there that we'll highlight tonight, the business. Semesterizing of electives. Quick study in this, if you have an elective that's a year-long course, that student is in that course all year, has less options. If you semesterize that, which means you have half a year and still have a lot of fun and good stuff to do, all right? Now you can offer that twice or offer another elective. So what we've done specifically in most of our, I think all of our electives now are semesterized. So kids now can take a lot more courses that they choose and they want to be in, above and beyond graduate. And that was a good sacrifice by the staff. They had to rewrite some curriculum and do some things differently. But it's the best for kids, so you'll see some of that tonight. Flexibility graduation requirements. We have a lot of graduation requirements, and each year we look at that. So we talked about how do we become a little bit more flexible so we have a rigorous curriculum, strong curriculum. Kids will get out of here very competitive, but also when they're junior, senior year, they have some options to choose some courses they have passion about, whether it's the arts, sciences, math, English's. So what we've done there was we've made some courses that can be accepted in different places. For example, our technology classes, which have grown, you'll see a high... For example, our technology classes, which have grown, you'll see highlighted tonight, they're awesome. They used to count just for the arts graduation requirement. And we talked about, why can't they, you know, why can't they count for something else in technology? Right? Now, they can either work. We have a lot of those either work situations now, where kids that are interested maybe, let's say in the arts, all right, can take some of those electives, get them out of the way, and now can focus on all our electives when they get into junior, senior year. Didn't have that before. So, that's a real nice addition and a great job by our teachers to do that. We're going to see, we focused on our struggling learners more this year. We didn't, we don't, and we're going to have a great intervention or tier intervention plan for our struggling learners. We have some things here and there, but we've really worked hard to streamline that. We have a task force now that works on that. But we also reflect this in our beliefs for our kids, looking at the data, looking at our math scores, looking at how our kids are struggling in that area. We, our math department has come up with a nice solution to offer some math foundation courses for those kids in eighth, ninth grade that are struggling with concepts math, so that before they get on to 10th, 11th grade, they are strong and solidified there. So, we have some extra offerings there in foundations. We've also done the same with our technology courses. So, those kids that want to go into some high-end technologies, some robotics, that type of thing, but love it, and middle school does a great job with robotics and technology, so we've got some foundation classes just for ninth, eighth and ninth graders. You'll see that in this, I think that's a cool way to get those kids involved in that. And the last thing you'll see, you'll hear about tonight among other things, is our academic support center. We envision this to be a place where, you know, focusing on our eighth and ninth graders primarily, right when they come in, if we identify them very early, that, I guess we report, it's come out, and that child's failing one or two classes, we get them in the academic support center. That academic support center will be, how about a certified teacher, but also we'll have upperclassmen as tutors, working in there with our younger kids, teaching them those classes, so it's a win-win, getting credit for going in there and doing that. I think it's a very healthy culture and something we lack right now, that'll be here next year. And I think together with our eighth grade teaming model, where we can identify those kids earlier, put them in that academic support center, having those older kids tutoring them, with a teacher overseeing it, it'll be in the conductor between the class, the mentor and the student with the panels. I think we'll have a lot more success in identifying and helping our kids early on, so they don't struggle later on. So, those are some of my highlights, but our folks will share more sneak preview surprises. And we've got some other, you're going to see a lot of cool things tonight, but we've got some other really good things in the works right now as we speak, that I'm excited to share with you, but they're not ready yet. So, I hope to come back with your permission later in the year before the summer and share those things that we've got going on for next year. All right? So, thank you very much. I'll have the guidance team, I take this first.
Do we have someone that can meet up?
One more, Steve, if you don't mind. Okay, my name is Jen Felice and I'm a guidance counselor, letters A through F. The first piece that I want to highlight up at the top there is we have, actually, if you could go back, Steve. We have shifted some of the language in our science and technology grad requirements. We've actually merged the two of them, so they align a little bit more with the language that's in the mass core. So, we've essentially taken our four credits of tech and we've slid it into science, and now it's a 16 credit total. The next piece is we have adjusted the overall grad requirement credit total to 100. So, we shifted it from 104 because it was initially based on the eighth class schedule, and now that we went down to seven, we slid it down to 100 credits total. The last piece there, you'll see up there, is we actually took out, we actually published, we previously published the Mass State, the university admission standards, but we've taken that out and we've added a link on our website. We felt that the program of studies wasn't the appropriate place for that, and we've added to our website. So, those are basically the major changes there.
Hi, I'm Rick Gifford, I'm one of the guidance counselors, G through N. Mr. Burkhed mentioned some of the grids that we're adding, just to make it a little more user-friendly and a little easier to find information. These are two grids that we're adding in the guidance area. One is just a grid that shows all of our AP courses, makes it easier for students to find. These courses are, of course, still listed in each department with a full description, but this is an easy way that students can just look at this and see everything that we have available. And for a school our size, it's a pretty impressive offering. Also, as Mr. Burkhed had mentioned, the business courses, where we'll have an accounting course and a personal finance course in the math department, but we wanted to highlight other business-related courses, which are global finance, that's in the social studies department, practical money skills for life, but we're still settling on the name for that, but that was also called personal finance previously, but it was in the social studies department. So, this will focus more on life skills, college readiness, things like that. And then the community internship program, which I'll have a little more information on in one of our upcoming slides, which we really want to continue building up, to get students out into the community, really get some real-world business skills. So, we're very excited about those. Yes?
Can I, there's a lot of information here, so I just wanted to see if I can catch some of it. So, did you say the practical money skills now is going to include the getting ready for college?
The personal finance course, when it was taught in the social studies department, always did have a component of that, and I would often go into the classroom and help with that, with that part of it. Sometimes it was career planning, sometimes it was how to access financial aid for college, things like that.
And then, community internship is, was that ever called something else, like community service or something?
No, they're two different things. We've had community internship for quite a while. I was very involved at Chatham High School, where we had that for at least 14 years at Chatham High School, where students were placed in a variety of settings. And I've actually got a little more detail on that in an upcoming slide.
Was there a requirement for us students to do any kind of community service?
Currently, I don't think there is as a graduate requirement.
But there was at one time.
Chatham was.
Harwich and Chatham previously had requirements, but they were very different from one another. What we find, and we certainly find this in guidance, is most of our students are doing a tremendous amount of community service already.
Thank you.
Well, a little more information about the academic center that Mr. Burkhed was speaking of. We have a very rich and robust curriculum here, very challenging curriculum, but what we're finding is that particularly some of our younger students in grades eight and nine are struggling, meeting those demands, keeping up with their homework, learning good study skills and good habits for that. We have a very strong special education program, where students have been identified with special needs, have an academic support class. This would be somewhat similar type of class, but for students who aren't identified as having a special needs or learning disabilities. Typically, this would be for students in grades eight and nine. Our goal is to have a section of this available every block during the day, so that it's flexible and can fit into a student's schedule. We actually met, the guidance department met this afternoon, we have a guidance counselor from the middle school, and already identified a number of seventh graders who would benefit from this coming forward into next year. So, many of them would be scheduled directly into this in the fall semester. If by mid-year, they have their grades up and they're able to support their academic progress, they could then move out of that class and go into maybe another elective. If they need to continue for the rest of the year, they could. So, this is really seen as an intervention that honestly, I wish we had it in place right now, because we could help a lot of kids right now. Having this next year, I think will be more successful as a school and really help move kids forward successfully, grade to grade, knowing that they're prepared to move on to the next grade.
Without getting into individual students who may be troubled at eighth grade level, what block would they miss in order to go down and get some support?
Well, typically, it would be in place of another elective that they may already have. So, they're not really missing, they're not missing an English or a math or a science or a history. It would be in place of maybe an art class, maybe a music class, some sort of an elective course, so that they can focus on their primary core academic areas.
Jen, I hear you say that middle school guidance counselor are identifying a red flagged kid who are struggling but are going to be promoted, so that they, we won't need to wait till January, but in fact...
Day one, when they start school in the fall, they'll have, they'll have a support system that they don't currently have.
Yeah. Great idea.
Would it have to wait until semester to start, or like October, if students struggle, even before progress reports? Is there...
We're intentionally going to keep the class sizes very small to begin with, so for the students that are identified from day one, we're going to try to distribute them throughout the day, so that there's room. So, if we do see, that's a good example, come October, when the first progress reports are coming out, if we see that a student is failing two or three classes, we could pull them out of another elective, and that's the advantage of having seven blocks in it, so we can pull them out wherever we need to, and to the least disruption of their studies.
Sure.
I love this, starting with eighth and ninth grade. For kids that are in 10th, 11th, 12th grade that might need something like this, is there anything in place at all?
They can still access this. Where we're finding, and this is in our own data, is we're finding eighth and ninth grade, that's where the biggest problems are. We do have some other vehicles for upperclassmen that can help. We have had students in the guidance office working. Sometimes there's some students who are providing a school service in the library, in the guidance area, and it gives them some time, but they're much more independent as older students. Really, they just need time to get their work done and be prepared for class. Whereas, we're finding the younger students may need more of an active support and particularly organizational role.
And if I could just say one thing about that, too, I think historically, those students that are in 11th, you know, 10th, 11th and 12th grade that are struggling, they were struggling in eighth and ninth grade and probably were not addressed. And I think, I think the goal of this is that we catch them early to close those gaps, which are typically skills that are just lagging.
If that's possible. Yes.
So, this spring, you'll be a search for a Mother Teresa faculty member.
Yes.
Will come to us with the skill of man for all, a woman for all seasons.
That's great.
Terrific.
That is the goal. And then really, the second part of this is continuing with the community internship program. And this is really addressing more of our upper-level students, these would typically be juniors or seniors in the internship program. They do need to be able to provide their own transportation, which is why typically it's upperclassmen. This is an excellent program. Most schools on the Cape participate in this, and we're currently participating in this. My vision, I would really like to see this program grow significantly. We have about a dozen students right now who are doing the community internships. It's in partnership with Cape and Islands Workforce Development Board, so there is some accounting there and some grant money that comes through there as well to support that program. When, previously, when I was at Chatham High School, we would average about 50% of the senior class participating. Obviously, we have much smaller classes, but if we had 50 kids, typically, we would have 20 to 25 students participating. So, we're a much larger school, we have class sizes in the next few years of over 100 to 110, growing to 115. I'd like to see this program really expand, so that we can be more active in the community and have more of those community partnerships developed. We've already had some fantastic programs. I know Gunnar Reinwald was in the paper a few weeks ago, he's doing an internship with the fire department, and we've actually had very successful internships with fire departments, both in Chatham and Harwich, as well as the police departments in Chatham and Harwich. But we can place kids in any area they're interested in.
So, my question on this is, just so it could be available for kids without their own transportation, I'm not that knowledgeable about the flex bus, do you know what those are? But I know that a lot of people get to my office at various times on those things. So, could something maybe be looked at towards that, so people that don't have vehicles could access it?
I would love to be able to increase the accessibility of that. There really is a limiting factor for students, and the other limiting factor is our rotating schedule. Because if the bus schedule permitted them to go one day, it may not the next, because we have a rotating schedule. So, even the way this class would be scheduled, when it's first block in the morning at eight o'clock, typically, students wouldn't be going to a work site at that time. So, they'll actually meet as a class, in a classroom here in the school, and work on resume writing and interview skills and all those good job skills. Then, after that, they would be going out to their internship placements in the rotation, so around 9:15, 10:45, 11:30, 1 o'clock. It does make a challenge for transportation.
It does, but I think that, but some of them, they've told me that if they notify the company like two days in advance or something, they often can do it. But I just like us to look into it.
I will look into that, because I'd really like to improve the accessibility of this program. Thank you.
All right, so the last slide up here, and I won't take any more time, but the last slide up here is just a quick slide of our guidance and counseling curriculum per grade level. And the one thing that I wanted to highlight on there, if you can see up there, starting in the eighth grade, we actually shifted our college and career exploration down into the eighth grade, where previously, it was 11th and 12th grade, and we've shifted it into the eighth, ninth and 10th grade this year. So, we were actually able to hit all of our students' grades eight, eight through 10, doing classroom presentations on college and career readiness. So, I just wanted to highlight that. Sort of concludes our presentation. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Rachel Barnes, I'm the chair of the English department. This is going to be short and sweet. The first thing we did was create a table, we didn't have one before. It's a really good visual reminder for kids to see what things are available for them to choose, that are the requirements. Our electives are not here, so these are the things that are required for them to complete. The electives are further down in the program of studies in an elective section, so that the kids won't confuse what is expected and what's the fun stuff they can play with later. The next thing you'll notice is that our electives have, of course, changed, much in the same way that Mr. Burkhed had described. We had several that were full-year-long courses, as much as I could spend a lifetime with Shakespeare. Most kids really only want a couple of months, I have no idea why. So, we've gone ahead and we've reduced our year-long course offerings in Shakespeare and Irish literature to semester, in order to sort of entice kids to come and give it a try. If we see enthusiasm and interest, we can certainly build a Shakespeare II and an Irish literature II, so that they can have that full complement, if that's something that they're looking for in the future. We're also adding for next year, I Think, which is a study of philosophy. The kids will be reading some of the old ancient philosophers and getting into debate and rhetoric and discussing all of those elements, which we know are so important to their writing. So, that's that quality reading of ancient text plus, you know, the modern thought that's connected to it. We're excited about that. And finally, of course, we're doing a number of things for the 2016, 17 year, but we've actually kind of chopped it almost in two, our electives. We really wanted to make sure that we didn't water it down, give the kids so many choices that we never filled anything, which has happened to us in the past, and we're recognizing that. So, we're offering some for this year, and then for the following year, we're going to go ahead and offer the things we did not offer this year, and we're going to take a look at what was really popular and still had kids on the waitlist to fill, and see if we can continue to offer those in the following year, so that things that are really popular, kids don't get to miss out on just by being in the off year. That's our, our plan for the English department.
Thank you.
I'm Matthew Brown from the History and Social Sciences Department. With question about the utility of our studies, I always will have to be able to point to the 2016 presidential primaries. The History and Social Science Department will continue to offer rigorous four-year path to graduation, courses in US history, world history, and government, as laid out in this chart here. The senior year of government requirement allows students to take part in the We the People program, which culminates in a statewide competition. We the People has been a treasured tradition for Chatham students, including Chatham High graduate Ian Hoffentery, who now runs the program. You see him on the left, beaming through his beard. Monomoy will also offer AP US history, AP European history, and AP psychology, and all history and government courses are offered at the honors level. Government studies at Monomoy connect directly with civic life at local, state, and national levels. We featured seven field trips last year to the Iowa primaries, to the Kennedy's museum, to the JFK museum, to Washington DC. The social studies department will be offering an array of electives next year, including practical money skills for life, psychology, two courses in law, criminal law and civil and family law, and students may also choose from global investing, global issues, and baseball and society, and the Kennedy years. Thanks.
Oh, you have questions?
My question is, I meant to ask it last time. Is that, was not any cuts in the, or reduction in the social studies department, is there...
There was a reduction in staffing last year. We lost our eighth teacher, Samantha Rafferty, who was teaching eighth grade. I'm now teaching eighth grade in her place, as well as... who was teaching eighth grade. I'm now teaching eighth grade in her place, as well as AP Psychology. But we still have the full complement that was left over.
Okay. Did we cut out any plans that we offered last year? Are we cutting out any next year that we are offering this year?
At this point, the only thing that's really changed significantly is that the We the People course, which was a freestanding course, is now essentially being offered equivalent to honors government in the senior year. We've maintained the senior government requirement, which both Chatham High and Harwich High have featured for quite a long time. I would have to ask Mr. Houston to be sure quite how long. But it's been, I think, over a decade, possibly two, that we've had that senior government requirement. The Law course, which was originally a year-long course, has been divided into two, as I mentioned.
And so that would, one and two would be equivalent, one and two, or not?
They're not really equivalent, no. Well, they're equivalent in their credit, but they're not equivalent as courses. One is criminal law, and the other one treats it entirely different, has an entirely different focus. So the idea behind this, most kids are interested in criminal law, and that's, they come in and take criminal law, and they find that they're interested enough to continue into civic and family law. In truth, I suspect that criminal law is still going to be the major focus for that in the curriculum. Thank you, television.
Okay, that's great. So I have that same question when that anyone else comes up because I just want to know what's happening. So thanks.
Any others?
We still have, I went kind of quickly by the slide, but still have a four-year history, four-year history requirement for graduation.
Yes. My colleagues and I have noted that the amount of civic involvement of the students has been enhanced by having seniors who are on the cusp of voting or actually voting, taking part in government courses. And having a selectman teaching government never hurts. And Mr. Dixon, of course, is a selectman in Brewster. And they take, I find that when students have graduated, they're very busy talking to me on Facebook about the election. Let's put it that way. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I am Mary Hemen, here to present the math department's program of studies. And for, I cannot. We are a fun group of people. I wanted to point out, as Bill mentioned, we have a new addition coming on board next year that we are very excited about. John Ambrose is going to be joining us at the high school to take on those three new sections of business and picking up two sections of math as well. And John was the former high school math teacher at Chatham High School, and then when the merger took place, ended up in grade seven. So when Scott posted the business slash math opening, we had a few applications come in, and John's was one of them. And we looked at all of them, and we're actually very excited that John's stood out actually better than all the others. And we met and talked, and we feel that his vision for these new business classes that he's developing are really going to excite and draw the students in. I know they were missing them terribly this year after losing the business program last year. So we're adding John to our list of math teachers, and we're very excited about that. Just a few of the highlights. We are focusing on a traditional pathway and an accelerated pathway in terms of how students can progress through their studies of mathematics. And the traditional pathway really provides them with exactly what Math Corps is looking for in terms of the four years of, we do have a four-year math requirement, beginning in grade nine with Algebra I, grade 10 Geometry, grade 11 Algebra II, and then grade 12, they have the opportunity to take a trig pre-cal class. Adding to that, we offer discrete math as an elective for grade 12. And we also offer AP Statistics along that same traditional pathway. So even a student that doesn't necessarily start in the accelerated pathway still has that advanced placement option the time they're a senior. So we're happy about that. The accelerated pathway is the second pathway that we have available to students, which actually begins as early as grade seven. Students are identified at the end of sixth grade and are placed into a grade seven and then a grade eight accelerated pathway, where they then, when they arrive in grade nine, take geometry honors. Grade 10, they do Algebra II honors. And then grade 11, there's a pre-cal honors culminating with AP Calculus their senior year. And again, another chance to take another advanced placement course by the college board. So there are some great, very rigorous classes that students of all levels certainly can take. And we have the two pathways. I didn't put a copy of the table. We've had it in our program of studies for a while. But if you look through the actual program, it talks about how there's movement available across pathways. It's not like if a student comes in at one spot that they can't move across. So there's always room for movement there. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out, Bill had mentioned this as well, the foundations of math classes is a new little concept. We talked long and hard about how to address these children that really do struggle. We actually had conversations here earlier this year when we did the problem solving about how do we help these kids. And we're very excited. We think that this is really going to target, and Jen Police mentioned it as well, that addressing these students in the earlier grades, and that means for us, grades eight, nine, and 10 we are incorporating, that if, we're asking them to have a second math class in addition to. So this is not getting them out of what the Math Corps recommends. It's not getting them out of what your state schools will want these kids to have accomplished by the time they graduate, which is through Algebra II. So it's not replacing any of that, but it's supplementing for those kids that really struggle. And our goal, like Jen mentioned, is to address it early so that those gaps are filled in and they can be successful in those higher-level math classes. But we're planning on offering it for grade eight exclusively. And then the Algebra I and Geometry Foundations classes are actually, they are two separate courses. So students, if they need to, can take Foundations in Algebra I in their freshman year in conjunction with Algebra I. And then if need be, they can take Foundations in Geometry their sophomore year in conjunction with the Geometry class. But they will be getting full credit for those classes, but not a math credit for graduation. So we still anticipate and expect them to move through the pathway through Algebra II. But the Foundations classes, we're hoping will solve some of the issues that we've seen over the years there. And then lastly, the business electives. As I mentioned, John's going to be joining us and is actually in the process of developing three sections of business. Accounting I and Personal Finance. We're not sure how many sections it's going to split. It's actually going to depend on signups. So if the draw is more for Algebra I, we'll offer two sections of Algebra I. I mean, Accounting I, yeah. And then one section of Personal Finance or vice versa. So that's how those are going to be driven. We are going to give priority to the seniors and then work our way back in terms of filling those classes. And I believe it was Mr. Burkhead had on one of his slides that they, again, can get a fourth year of math credit from the Accounting or the Personal Finance class. And this, again, is another way to help those kids that struggle. If you look at our traditional pathway, getting to a point of pre-calculus senior year is tough for a good number of students. So this business pathway will allow them to get through Algebra II, which is what the state schools want, and provide a fourth year of math via the business elective. So we're happy to have that back, and we're excited that John's going to be doing that.
I'm not sure what the answer to this is, but is there any way the average kid takes Personal Finance? So when they graduate from high school, we would know that every child knows how to do their checkbook, can pay bills, you know, the things they need for life? Or is it just for kids that have trouble with math?
It's not going to be a course designed for kids that have trouble with math. So it is a business elective. We're offering these classes for any student grades 10, 11, and 12 because they do need a little bit of algebra skills in order to get through those. But no, so these are absolutely, we actually envision Accounting II being implemented maybe on an every-other-year basis, like we talked about earlier. So no, not at all. What I'm saying about the struggling learner is for that small population of students that get themselves through Algebra II, but we have a four-year graduation requirement for math? Math Corps wants kids to get through Algebra II in order to qualify to go to the state school. But because we have a four-year math requirement, they're getting through Algebra II at the end of their junior year, which means now they're taking pre-cal or AP Stats. And that's a tough ride for a lot of kids. So what we're saying is that the business classes can count as that fourth year of math if need be. So it's not a class that's designed for a struggling math learner. So that's not the intention at all. It's going to be there as a safety net for those kids.
So what portion do you imagine of kids that we graduate will have taken the Personal Finance for?
For that fourth year of math? Is that what you mean?
Yes. Or even for, can you take it as an elective?
Yes. That's what, so they're, right. I mean, historically, and I'm going back to Harwich High School days, Personal Finance was not taught by a math teacher, so it wasn't given a math credit at all. We did allow students to use their accounting class as a math credit. In terms of the percentage of kids in those classes that used it for that, I don't know. Guidance, I'm sure, would have record of that maybe, but a small chunk of kids?
Yeah, I have this hope. And I'm not sure that it's the school's responsibility to do everything, but it just seems like more and more kids, and I don't even mean kids, I mean young adults, are having struggles. I mean, when I was growing up in a young adult, there wasn't such an emphasis on credit cards, for example, or college didn't cost so much. And so there wasn't this overlay of debt to start out with. But now it does seem like there's a ton of very well-respected people that can't seem to manage this.
So these classes will be offered as business classes. We don't have, the high school doesn't have any business requirement for graduation, so that's out of my thinking.
Just to clarify some things.
I'd like to make the rules, but I don't.
I could draw, I could do a math problem and draw a picture on this one. But if we have, if John's teaching two sections of Personal Finance, so we have 20 students in each one of those classes, so 40 students per year. There's 140 kids roughly in a cohort, so it's 40 out of 140 would be getting it in any cohort that's going through, if you want to look at it that way. So roughly a third, if we're teaching two sections of it. And that's not the only place that kids get exposure to Personal Finance. I know my daughter's in Andrea's math class, and I think that in the project-based learning that's happening at the middle school, she came home, you know, asking all sorts of questions about, it's like, Dad, we need to go into your bank account and see how much money we're spending on this bill, this bill, this bill. So throughout their different exposures to math and project-based work, we're hitting on Personal Finance topics. So it's not just happening in the class that Mr. Ambrose is teaching.
Yeah, I don't need to pick that up.
Oh, no.
Can you run through the, excuse me, I should shut up. Eighth-grade math, ninth-grade math, tell me what they are.
So in the traditional pathway, students would take grade eight math, which is technically a pre-algebra class. Grade nine Algebra I, grade 10 Geometry, grade 11 Algebra II. And then grade 12, you've got some options. Pre-calculus would be the typical. But we offer discrete math, and we offer AP Stats as a couple of other options. Discrete is a little less challenging than your traditional trig pre-cal class. It's more project-based learning, it's more math applications. And then AP Stats is your college board-driven advanced placement statistics class.
But in the senior year, they could also take Accounting or Personal Finance.
And then those are business electives that they can take at any point along the way. But if so, if they so choose, then, and I think we put in there that it was going to be on a case-by-case, you know, looking at the student case-by-case is that there are going to be kids that reach that wall at the end of Algebra II and perhaps are heading off to the family business or whatnot, or even business in college. And a course in Accounting would be more beneficial than a course in discrete or whatnot. So yes, they can use those business electives as that fourth year of math as well.
So I'm thinking how difficult calculus was. And there's a lot of kids who are obviously going to go on to college where they're not going to have any more calculus-type classes, or they're going to go into a field where they don't need calculus. So I'm glad to hear that there are other options so that kids don't like, you know, get so caught up in how difficult upper levels of math are that they suffer their GPA and also don't really benefit from it. So I'm glad to have these other options, is what I'm trying to say. And I'm going to offer the first vlog for the vernacular.
Good evening. I'm Dustin Burns, Science Department Chair. And I'll try to keep this brief within five minutes. We're really excited about a lot of changes that we've made to improve the science education for our students. One of the first changes, this is similar format to what you've seen before. We're experimenting with introducing a theme to our eighth-grade science, something that's very relevant to where we live. Right now, the theme most likely be oceanography, which is tying the components of eighth-grade science directly into the science of oceanography to try to consolidate those different components in a way that makes more sense, especially considering our location. So that's a big improvement in the right direction for eighth-grade science. What we're also trying to do is to offer more selection for our science students at all levels. For every science student that goes through Montemoy High School, we want to deliver. we want to deliver the absolute best, top-notch science education. But we also want to provide students who want to advance in science and really challenge themselves and get more rigorous courses, the opportunity to do that. When I moved here, the, the concept of school choice was kind of alien to me, and I'm starting to accept it. More competition, and we don't want to lose any students going someplace because they say, hey, we can't get what we want at Montemoy with science. That's just not going to happen. So we're, we're doing everything we can to, to provide the very best science education. So eighth-grade science, ninth-grade science, for now, the pathway is in ninth grade. They're taking biology, and then biology again in 10th grade. And this is kind of an artifact from the way things were done in Chatham. I mean, we decided to change that. We need a little time to transition, but we're going to eventually try to offer physics in, at the ninth-grade level, then biology, then chemistry. All the while, taking whatever electives they want, pretty much after the 10th grade. But we're also wanting to open up advanced courses at an earlier time. You know, this AP Biology, we're going to try to offer that, will offer that, for our sophomores who are capable of doing it. I've done that in the past in Chatham and had a lot of success. So it is, it is possible, and no need to wait for certain students there. If we can go to the next slide, I'll talk about some of the, maybe the next slide after this. There we go. So some of the courses that we want to add are kind of contingent upon finding a phys, full-time physics teacher, someone who's totally dedicated in, to those courses. Right now, we have someone who's doing an excellent job, mostly teaching chemistry and also offering some physics courses, but it's, it's not as much as we want. So we're in the process of aggressively pursuing physics candidates, and we've made a lot of progress in that area. And assuming that we bring someone on board for next year, we might be able to offer astronomy. There's a high demand for that among our students and staff. A little secret, the universe is, is very big, and we get a little consumed with what's happening on Earth, but we want our students to look up also and know that there are a lot of cool things happening out there. And also advanced placement physics, advanced placement chemistry, and conceptual physics, that would be the ninth-grade version of physics. And what's great about the AP Physics course is that, of course, we're interested in teaching. There are multiple versions of that, would kind of blend seamlessly with a student who's taking AP Calculus. They can take what they're learning in AP Calculus and apply it directly to AP Physics. It's very high-level, very rigorous, and it's an excellent option for certain students. So can we go back one, Mr. Burkhead, please? The last one, so again, those physics courses are, you know, based on, if we're able to find a qualified, highly-qualified physics candidate, we think we'll definitely be able to do that. And the last course there is Foundations of Technology, which is new. And this was designed by Mr. Bresky, our technology teacher, who kind of crafted this course to make it easier for students to get the basic knowledge they need to move on to any of the many different technology electives that we offer. So it's going to certainly help with selection for those technology courses. And these are just kind of what would actually, descriptions that would actually appear in the POS, kind of describing what the course is. I won't read those to you. And as you've heard reference before, we are following path of semesterizing, not even sure if that's a real word, but making a lot of our courses semester courses to open up options for students, letting them take more science electives and just making it easier for them and giving them a more of a choice in what they do as they progress through the years. So these are the courses that have, we've transformed from year-long courses to semester courses. One that didn't make it up there is actually the one that I teach, the elective forensic science. So that'll also be a semester. And those are the major changes. Questions? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Smelser, World Language, and I'm happy to be here tonight to explain to you, with the rest of my colleagues, our World Language program. What we have is a pretty simplified version of a grid, so that both parents and students would be able to see where they stand. We basically have two paths. As you can see, the first path is Language Year One and Language Year Two. And as we've been talking about struggling learners, we decided upon offering a new course called Language and Culture. And this course, as I'll show you on the next slide, is going to focus on a struggling learner. As we all know, whether it's Algebra or any course that's, you know, complex, and some kids really are not ready to move on to another year of World Language study. So this is the new course called Language and Culture to help meet that need. And as I'll show you in, in the next slide, a little description about the course. It's going to be hands-on, project-based. And this way, we can help students be successful in their World Language and receive their credit for the two years. We have an asterisk that clearly shows that, you know, that's not the track you want to take if you plan on going to college. On the far right, we have the Advanced Studies, and that is our traditional framework of going up the ladder. And the, the other unique thing about this is, because we have the model of eighth grade, we thought it was important for students, if they start in eighth grade with a language, that they would actually have five years of that language to, to sit for the AP exam. So if you go to any AP course, and we were fortunate enough last summer, all three teachers, as we're rolling out the new AP courses next year, we attended a AP Institute, and they all said, if it's, if it's at all possible, if you can have five, five years of language study, you will put your kids in the best chance of being successful. Not to say that, you know, World Language is any more difficult than AP Chemistry, but we have, but what we, what we have to realize is, the tests for these languages require four or five years of study. So it's not just, you know, a couple of years in one, in one subject. So providing them with that extra year will, will give us the most chance of success. Additionally, if someone should come in from another school in ninth grade, they still have the option of taking the AP class, because they'll be run concurrently with the Language Four honors. For example, right now, I have a Language Four Latin honors, and I also have one AP student in the class doing an independent study. So that particular student is sort of the model that we envisioned for going forward with this. And, yes. No question. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a comment. I really like this idea of having that Language and Culture. Familiar, familiar that they have that asset in several other schools, and it's been a real boon to the kids that probably benefit from that hands-on. I think that's a wonderful addition.
Yes, thanks. And this is a description of the course and what it will look like. So this is for the non-traditional language learner, and the way we're designing it is so that it will be more project-based, more hands-on, and make them more successful. Okay, and then the last thing is, we're very happy to announce that next year, we will be rolling out the AP courses for French, Spanish, and Latin. And then in the not-so-distant future, Mandarin as well.
Hello, I'm Steve Pass. I teach television production and digital media here at Montemoy. We're actually filling in for Deb Donovan, who is out. Hopefully, she'll be back soon. Some of the highlights for the classes that I'll be teaching are up here, but we decided to do something new for the Program of Studies Two. We're going to roll out a video format for the students to be able to watch and see who the instructor is, but also have a little description of the projects that the students might be working on. So, Mr. Burkhead, hopefully it works.
If you go back to the first half, I think. There we go.
Hope my application is close.
Hopefully, they're silent.
So what I'm really saying is that my classes are amazing.
The trophy of one will be taking place on TV. So it's the same course, but just a different name. They'll be introduced to the cameras, to the tripods, the microphones that we'll be using, some handheld microphones and clip-on microphones. The projects are a little more advanced than the introduction to Foundations of Digital Media that they might have taken previously. The first project is to getting familiar with the camera and editing. It's an introductory project. And then we move on to some foley work, learning about sound effects and how that is incorporated into movies, TV shows, and then they produce their own little movie. Then they go into making commercials, a 30-second commercial incorporated in foley sound, and the different types of camera angles that they learn about. It progresses on to their final project, which is a mini-documentary that they'll produce, five to 10 minutes. It could be a documentary or a mockumentary, depending on what these students would like to do.
So we'll be rolling this out for each of our courses, for the Visual and Performing Arts. We thought it'd be a TV production. So this is my other course that we're rolling out, is TV Production. Yeah, you can just, anyway, so TV Production's a great class. But it's a, I think it's a great way for the students to visualize, you know, they like to see what's going on. So we figure we can go this route, just to enhance the Program of Studies. Then we go into the music portion. As you can see, they'll be offering 8 to 12 ensemble. Select choir additions will be held at the end of April. But also with the music department, we're actually going to stream their concert next week with part of the TV production classes. So we'll be able to stream that out to the web, and eventually, we'll put that out on public access, too. So, you know, it's not just the sporting events we do. We also do the music events that are going on here at the high school. And they're doing a great job with the play that just went on last week, with the concert that's going on. So there's a lot of offerings that are happening.
But we still want the live audience, so please come and see it. Don't stream it until you've come to see it. Hi, I'm Bernadette Waystack. I'm also part of the Visual and Performing Arts Department. And I'm afraid that Steve also has a commercial in the can from me that may be coming up in a moment. But just to touch upon a few more of the highlights in the visual end of things, I am already teaching this year a course called Foundations of Art for our eighth and ninth graders. I'm really glad to hear everybody else is co-opting that term of foundations. It really, we need basis everywhere to grow from. And in our department, you can grow from that into a number of other specialized areas that sort of, you know, get you in there as an eighth or ninth grader, give you sort of a broad experience of a lot of media and techniques. And also for students who come in later, if you come in after ninth grade, Portfolio One kind of serves the same purpose for students. From there, they can track up and they can begin to specialize. We've got exhibits in local museums and up at the State Transportation Building right now, some of our students. We've got an award winner in the Cape Cod Build and Add Times coming out of our graphic design class, and a lot of great things to come next year. I'm afraid one of them is a commercial for Foundations of Arts.
Foundations of Art is an introductory class for eighth and ninth graders. And it's just that, a foundation of the elements and principles of design for those who want to develop their skills in the visual arts. Students learn to work with a variety of materials and techniques in drawing, painting, printmaking, and sculpture. Portraiture and figures, landscape, still life, and perspective drawing are all covered. Skill building is the focus, and the skills you need can already be taught. Everyone's an artist, and you'd be amazed at what you can learn to do.
Any questions? Real quickly, for, for the broadcasting portion of it, right now, we're, we're live in Harwich on our local access channel 22. We're working with Comcast right now to go live to Chatham. We had a letter from the Board of Selectmen, I believe. We received it, I forwarded it on to Comcast. Now, we're just waiting for the red tape from them to go through the stages of, you know, higher up and up and up. I'm hoping in the next month or two, probably next month, to be able to stream this live to the, to the public access channel and doing other events live, too. So we're getting there, it's just a lot of red tape that we've been going through.
Hi, I'm, how are you? I know it's late, so I'll get right to it. I'm Angelina Rameo-Chalaca, and I'm, well, representing the Wellness Department. And I work with a lot of really wonderful people, I must say. It's awesome. Up on the board here is quickly our mission statement and, of course, our transfer goals. For the next part, I'd just like to show you quickly. What we offer is eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. We offer them Health and PhysEd. They have it for one quarter in health and then one quarter for physical education. So they end up with half a year total in eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. And then in grade 11 and 12, we're offering eight different electives that are coming up. And that doesn't mean that children in the lower grades can't get into the upper grades, but we prefer leaving those electives for the upper grades. Eight credits are needed for wellness for graduation. And I wanted to say that I'd like to thank a number of people, such as the Arts of Charity, Cape Cod Five, the, the Garden Club, et cetera, because they were able to help us bring in a number of different things into our school this year. So for example, the Arts of Charity, they, they actually helped us to bring in a dance instructor, and that's one of the goals, that we'd love to get more dance into our curriculum. The other one, we tried to get self-defense in, and we had locked in the RAT instructor. Unfortunately, the RAT instructor had issues, so we're still working on that. So that's one of our goals that we'd like to get going. On the next slide, our department is always involved in community service, because it ties in with all the different things that we're doing. And our grants have helped us tremendously. So some of the things that we have hosted and get a lot of kids involved in, for example, this is our eighth year for Special Olympics. And it was great today, when I was in Boston, I found out that the MIAA is going to adopt the Special Olympics, and there were some things that I thought we couldn't do with our school. So I got to get our boss involved with that, so we can hold. We also have the kids doing a lot of different things. They host four blood drives a year, two for Cape Cod Hospital and two for the American Red Cross. We involve the Turkey Tribe. Triads. We get the kids running in many of the races around town, whether it be the cranberry races, the Howard 5K, or whatever. We also do a lot of things helping in terms of fundraising, where our kids can show their athletic skills as well as cooking skills. This year, we had a blast because our Human Rights Kids, our focus was dealing on the homeless on Cape Cod, especially the homeless teenagers on Cape Cod. And many of the children coming out of there, believe it or not, are from Howard and Chatham. So this year, we hosted, which was awesome, our first chili contest. And it was great because our kids not only got to have, work with a lot of people in the community, but they also got to learn about a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. So whether it be homelessness on the Cape, dealing with the businessmen up in Hyannis, and it was great for them to see some of the major issues that are happening even within our own community. So these are some of the things that we're working on. And I think pretty much that's it for us. Yes?
Compliment. The things that you do are just, you know, that you have the kids do the homeless, the senior citizens, terrific day. Lots of these things are so wonderful. My question, I'm not sure if it pertains to health, but it's the closest I could come. Are there any things taught in health particularly that have to do with mental health? Because I'm just wondering in our school where we cover this, because it's a teen issue.
That's a big issue. We were looking at the Youth Risk Survey, and that's one of the areas we definitely have to do more in. We're meeting the task force next week with Carla, and there are some things we need to move around in our curriculum so we can get a little bit more. Mental health is definitely one. Drug addiction is another, you know. Sexual aspect, the other sexual thing is a biggie. I've already attended with another one of my colleagues. We attended the Game Change, and we're hoping to bring a lot of the programs next year back to the school, so that it'll address some of those issues. And I also have another colleague who's heavily invested in, especially in terms of the opiate issue. So we're trying again to bring some things in. So we hope to bring Chris Townen back next year. We're also hoping to bring a few others. So we're still working on those things.
That's so wonderful. In the DSM-V, which is the Mental Health Book, all of the addiction issues are in there. So these are not separate from mental health. They're a big part of it. The Cape Cod Hospital, the inpatient people for mental health, they're almost always co-addicted. And so it's, you know, it's just such a need. So I'm so grateful for anything we do for them.
It's a need. It's a need definitely in Howard and Chatham, well across the Cape, but definitely Howard and Chatham, just with our children are dealing with, parents, grandparents, relatives, the whole thing, yeah.
We also have Sheila House, who's the Harvard Youth Counselor, works with our Guidance and Clinical Team to look at depression awareness and suicide awareness programs for, you know, that are programmed in routinely. So they did the science of suicide thing again this year. And again, it's something that's clearly noted in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey program that we put in place in response.
Well, thank you. Have a good month.
Last but not least, special education. Hi, my name is Tina Reyes. You'll notice special education, there are eight teachers currently. We have two intensives. One teaches the grades eight through 12, and we have another intensive who teaches the post-grad program. Now, we have two special ed teachers that are in the eighth grade this year, one for each team. And then there are four other of us that we are in grades nine through 12. Alternative education is not part of special education, but George Sopel, who's the instructor there, we do a lot of collaborating, so I incorporated him as well. So just some course offerings that we have. Learning support is something a little bit different. Instead of calling it academic support, we really wanted to change the name a little bit because we didn't want it to sound like the kids were coming in and just doing homework, because that's not what we want it to be. So we changed it to learning support. And kids take this class if they're on an IEP. They're evaluated from a team, and the team makes a decision. And then the team makes another decision when they're based on, when they are put on an IEP, if they need to take a learning support, which is what we're doing. That's a team decision. So this class is just gonna look at specific student-centered objectives that's based on the student's IEP. We're also gonna look at study skills that accommodate the student-specific learning styles, and that's gonna be taught looking at course material. So with the math, the English, the history, and all the fun stuff. The other course we offer is the Vocational Community Program, and this is for students that are ages 18 to 22. And this is also a team decision, that the team decides that the student is gonna stay until they're 22. This is gonna look at just vocational, academic, life skills instruction. It's here in school, and the kids are also out in the community. They're doing a lot of community internships, and they're also having paid jobs as well, which is really nice for them. The Alternative Learning Program, this is George's program. Students are learning life skills training, vocational preparation, and social skills development. And they work in a work-study, or they do a job experience in the afternoon. And my apologies, is there's a spelling error on here. I will refer myself for special ed testing tomorrow. Any questions? Yes?
If the graph shows a special ed teacher in grade eight, one in each of the two teams?
Correct.
Are those teachers involved in inclusion, or are there some pull-out youngsters in those two teams that are pulled out?
They're involved in both. So they are doing inclusion, and they are doing some pull-out classes as well, depending on what the kids need that was in their IEP. That was this year. Next year, we're gonna have to look at the upcoming seventh graders to see what their IEP is called for.
What would you estimate the percentage of our youngsters who are on IEPs, grade eight to 12?
I don't know about percentage-wise, but I can tell you for numbers, including the intensive special needs for the post-grad, we have a little bit over 100.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have a percentage for that.
That's all right.
Any other questions?
That concludes our part for now. I think Scott's gonna forward you all the actual program of studies to digest. And a lot torn out tonight is more of a presentation. Between now and the next meeting, certainly any specific questions, after you have time to look that over, we'd be happy to answer for you, so that you're very comfortable and confident with the product. Mr. Russell?
Bill, just to compliment, no questions. A tremendous amount of events put in. Not only our retro from a year ago, but women mid, guys, just a great job. I appreciate just sitting, listening to the growth of this team and the offerings that we in this school are presenting to our kids studying grade eight. So I know the amount of work that goes into even just preparing a presentation and launching this. So I thank you all. Terrific job.
I can't really follow that, but I love the way this was presented to me, because it's nice to see who the faces are of the people. It's nice to see the names. It's nice to have a little diversity to ask questions to. I know that people gave up their time to be here. I really appreciate it.
I agree. I have a, just a really quick question for the Guidance Department. How prepared would you say are you finding our eighth graders and incoming eighth graders in terms of organizational and study skills?
Oh, boy.
That's kind of loaded. That's a loaded question.
That's a loaded question. It is. I think that actually speaks directly to why we're creating the Academic Center program, because we have identified an issue with students coming in. I couldn't give you a percentage off the top of my head, but in meeting with the middle school guidance counselor this afternoon, she identified close to 40 students who could be at risk at this point.
I love the idea of the Academic Support Center. I think it's great. One of the reasons why I asked the question is, would it make sense, I mean, to me, it would make sense to have a required semester-long class in the fall that is just organizational and study skills, so that everybody gets on the same page?
We actually...
We actually do offer that, but I'm gonna have Rachel Barnes speak a little bit about that.
Hi, I'm Rachel Barnes. In addition to teaching English, I also teach a course that the eighth-grade teachers have designed. It's called Seminar. What the course was originally designed to do is address all of those kinds of things, organization, study skills. We also worked in things like the use of the library. How do we get into the computer and start using things like the library database and programs, such as noodle tools that allow students to do research papers effectively. We've since retooled some of that curriculum because we could not offer that to all eighth graders in the fall. It's just a scheduling glitch. So what we found is, we were sitting there all concentrating on how to do research papers, long after students have already been introduced and required to complete research papers. So we are refocusing the seminar classes right now to go primarily on skills that they're going to need lifelong through, through high school for all students, not just struggling learners, but students who usually have it together, but could still use a boost in organization and planning. Things like tackling the lockers, you know, you wanna get to it before you need a pitchfork to get the thing. So working with kids to come up with regular plans to do that is part of what that course does. It's part of the wellness curriculum in grade eight, so it goes opposite the gym and health curriculum. So all students will experience that at some point during grade eight.
So that is a required...
It is a required course. All students are currently taking that. They took that last year. And when we figured out the way the schedule played, we've retooled it a little bit for this year. We'll be meeting again to make sure that what we're offering for next year works in complement with the other things that are in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You know, Steve, it reminds me of another life where I was watching the other night up in the air with George Clooney. And he had a side task of having a backpack, and he talked to these business professionals about what's in your backpack. I recall a time down the road where the elementary moving on, fourth or fifth grade classes would create a survival kit for all the kids for the past 10 days, that last 10 days before summer, which, you know, things are kind of winding down. And they'd walk through with all the kids, the survival skill. And it was presented to, in the middle school, we had about 150 peer leaders. They do the same thing for the eighth graders as they move to the high school, because this study skill dilemma starts at first grade, the second and third. It's not just a discovery in grade eight that these kids are giving us a terrible thank you. And we reached some success with this. That challenge was always there, but it struck me that that little survival kit that the elementary seven schools passed on with their kids, a lot of the kids, not all, remembered that. And, you know, they felt like they had been sent off. Yes, so did.
I just wanted, before I end, I want to thank our, you know, I've said this before many times, but I travel from Plymouth each day, and I really do still look forward to work every day. Our kids are wonderful here. They're the best. But I've always been a big believer in that if you have happy teachers, you have happy kids. And so I want to thank these very hard-working department heads, all of our teachers, but specifically tonight for this product to come up with this. And I agree with you all that, when I first read it, because they just sent it to me and it was compiled, the only, you know, it was just impressive. And, you know, every department is very unique, and that was played out much better than I could ever do, or a document online could ever do. And I think you see a little bit of the future here tonight with the Finance Department and Steve. Ultimately, we like every course to have a digital video link where you can click on that, hear the teacher passionate about the course, explaining it, showing some kids working and doing it. How cool would that be? So I think you probably won't see that in many other high school program of studies, but you do at Montemoy. So, you know, the only downside about tonight, I was exposed for being a, you know, I'm not doing much work and kind of being in the front of me in here. So please keep my job, but I think I've got great people to work for here. So thank you all for your time, and have a good night.
I think, Bill, something that might be worth coming back and presenting, maybe not on the same night as the program of studies, is to share with the committee and community the things that happen in enrichment. And, you know, sort of the growth and what's, you know, what's happening that's not in a program of studies, that's not happening on the sports field. But there's, you know, the culture and that enrichment piece that's starting to blossom here, I think, is, is unique and different than what most schools have.
Dr. Blanchard, Scott's, because he asked, I got an extra minute to respond. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up, but I do want to open invitation to anybody in the audience, but specifically our school committee, to come and visit the school. I'd be happy to give you a personal tour. Scott mentioned our enrichment block, our seminar, which, you know, Ms. Middleton brought up, that I had forgotten about right now, with so much stuff going on. Not many schools offer that for eighth graders, to sit down, slow things down, and teach them about their school, about the Montemoy way. We're very proud of that. The enrichment is something that's developed during our, every other Wednesday, opposite early release. If you come visit during that time, you'll see a very collegial type of atmosphere, where kids may choose wherever they want to go among about 30 clubs and activities. We always have a featured, how shall I put this, a feature presentation in the library specifically around our Youth Risk Behavior Survey results on mental health, social-emotional, drug addiction. And those have been very well-intended by our kids. But we, our staff was initially a little nervous, saying, "We're gonna release 640 kids and give them a choice where to go in the whole building." And this came from our teachers. I gotta give them the credit. The teachers devised this. They came up with the, how it's run through our culture committee. And if you come around here on a Wednesday afternoon, quarter or two, you see the kids buzzing, they'll run to their friends, "Hey, where you going today?" "I'm going to the Out of War Club." "Or I'm gonna go to this club. "I'm gonna go to that club. "I'm gonna go see, I'm gonna go hear something about dating violence in the library." So very impressive stuff happening by our staff and our kids. So I invite you all to come talk about it at some point. Thanks for bringing up, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the five-year curriculum cycle.
Carolyn, guess 55 slides of this.
Hello. I don't have a PowerPoint for this part, because I've got another one coming up. But you do have a draft document that has all the information that I'm gonna talk about in this presentation. Thank you, Barbara. I'm gonna talk tonight about two strategic initiatives that are part of the strategic plan. So I want to thank you for approving that document, so that we are starting to dig right in and address some of the issues. So the first strategic initiative is the curriculum cycle. And some of you who have been with us on this journey remember that we started this curriculum building process five years ago. And when we did it, we were actually doing a curriculum cycle, all the process of a curriculum review simultaneously. So all of the content areas that you just saw were going through this process. So now that we're where we are, we can go back on to a traditional five-year curriculum cycle, which, again, is one of our strategic initiatives, and it's also in your policy. Do I have to... Which button? The red one?
No, the one on the right. There you go.
Oh, okay. This document is now kind of ready to be put out to pasture, because this was the plan that got us to where we are today. And I just put it up here one last time, because if you look all the way at the bottom, we're at 2015 and beyond. And at the very bottom of that section, it says, "Enter a regular curriculum review cycle." So this brings us to where we are tonight, because we've already done everything that's above to get us to this point. So I just wanted to put that up there. The curriculum development process or review process has four phases to it, an assessment phase, a development phase, an implementation phase, and an evaluation phase. And traditionally, every subject is revisited and reviewed every five years. And our policy says at least every five years. The cycle is informed by the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework. So whenever there is news that a framework is being revised from the state, then we want to make sure that that content area gets put in the pipeline so that we're ready for it. And then we have to kind of stay flexible and make sure that we can make modifications when needed. And there's actually one that's coming up that we might have to modify, the draft that you have in front of you. So again, you have this information on the back of that chart, a little more fleshed out, but I just wanted to put it up here. The assessment phase is when we really collect all of our data and our existing curriculum documents. We determine what the needs are, where our strengths are, where our areas of concern are. We go out, we conduct some research. We looked at effective practices, and then we begin to develop plans. And obviously, we want to make sure that And obviously, we want to make sure that we start to think about the professional development needs that will help us implement that plan. So the next phase, we develop a plan, we begin to implement it, this is where we might have an option to pilot a program or an initiative, if that's appropriate. We continue to collect student-teacher data during this development plan, and obviously make sure that professional development is targeted. Then, when we're ready to implement our changes and revisions, or in some cases, new programs, we are ready for full implementation, usually by about the third year in this process, but that's, it's flexible, depending on the area and the need. We want to continue to have ongoing professional development in that area. This is where we want to review student data very often to make sure that our implementation is true and regularly. And then the last phase is kind of cleaning things up, making sure that everything is where we want it to be, based on our original assessment. We have teacher teams that review data, we have a nice model in our professional learning communities, we make adjustments and revisions where needed. And then, when that content area gets out of that review cycle, it kind of stays in the support phase, because curriculum is dynamic, it's always changing, it's always growing, and so we have all of these different areas that inform our decisions as we're building up to the next cycle for that particular content area. You know, obviously, we have many ways to collect data on how our students are doing, we have our PLC time, what's called CLT time, which is the collaborative learning time at the elementary level. The educator evaluation system is a nice tool to be able to use, where we can set goals to help support this phase, if that's appropriate, ongoing professional development, and then our tiered systems of support that we're building in the district, that also can help inform the changes that we want to make, if at all, and that academic support lab is a good example of that. So, this is very hard to see, for those of you who are sitting in the audience, but hopefully you have a document there, and if you, if it suits your needs, we can go ahead and make it not a draft. But I just want to talk a little bit about some of the decisions that went into this cycle. This year, we're focusing on math, which is the next presentation to follow, for all of the obvious reasons that we've been concerned about mathematics in the district, particularly at the K7 levels, and I'll talk about that in a little while. We're also piggybacking wellness and guidance. When you do curriculum review cycles, you really want to stay away from putting two major content areas in any one cycle. That is, in particular, for the budget, so that this process will inform budget needs, and we can build those needs into the budgets as we go forward. But we are doubling up wellness and guidance because of the data that we've received from the youth risk survey, and we feel that it would be a good time to look at that curriculum, as Angie mentioned, and to start to look at our social emotional curriculum as well, and make sure that it is addressing the needs that came out of that survey as well. And then, you'll notice that we put the special education into the next phase, along with science, technology, and the performing arts. Reasons for that, special education, as you know, we're going to be having a new director next year, and we figured that it would be a nice way for her to start to get to know the personnel and the curriculum, and be part of that process, especially the assessment phase. And we're also putting in the science, technology, and engineering next year, because the new standards have just been approved, and this is a good time to get started. The Cape and Islands schools are starting to network together and develop curriculum units for students in the elementary and middle school grades, based off of those new standards, so that's kind of an exciting initiative that we'll be participating in. And then you can see how it kind of goes out and beyond. So that is the first presentation. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
This looks great. I just don't know how it works in the areas where you have a teacher at the elementary school teaching math and reading and history and all of these areas. It seems as though they're going to be inundated with curriculum like every minute.
That's a really good question. We will approach it very much like what we did with the, you know, that first colorful, you know, curriculum plan, and that would be to have teachers actually select an area that they feel a certain amount of interest and expertise in, and sometimes we also will do grade spans, so that we're not draining the staff out of the classroom. When you meet some of the teachers that worked on the K7 math review team, you'll understand that, you know, you have to kind of pick and choose the grades that you're going to focus on, and these educators that will be, that are here, you know, the elementary teachers decided that they wanted to be on this math review team, because that was an area that they were of interest. So, I think the model that we have with the professional learning communities, our department heads, and our instructional leaders at the elementary level, is a very effective model to help with some, with those issues, and I think it's just going to get stronger and stronger as we learn how to do it better.
Karen?
I have a question. On special education, you mentioned that next year with our new director, we'd be going into the Phase One assessment. I know that, right now, we're looking at hiring special education teachers, is our new director involved in that?
I don't know the answer to that.
She's, she is aware that we're hiring the teachers, we'll consult with her, and I know that, that she, you know, she's not officially on with us until the beginning of July, so, you know, so we have to be sensitive to, you know, to what her needs are, to help her close out where she is with Hearsbury before she comes, you know, comes with us, but she's, you know, she's been down meeting with Joan, she met with Joan, I think, last Friday, and will be, you know, will be involved, you know, sometimes remotely, and sometimes boots on the ground here.
I just wanted to know if she had been asked to participate as much as she can in the process of hiring these teachers who will be, you know, reporting to her indirectly, directly? Thank you.
Okay, we're just going to transition a little bit. So, I'm going to talk about another strategic initiative, and that is to reverse engineer our math curriculum. In the fall of this year, we assembled a curriculum review team, and some of the members are here tonight, patiently awaiting, and I appreciate that. And so we first met in October, and addressed our task, which is to recommend a K7 mathematics program that builds the skills to get our students ready for the state exams, but also to prepare them with the skills to be successful in, for algebra. So when we met in October, we had a great discussion about what we really wanted to, you know, we had done an extensive program review in years past, coming together. So what we wanted to do was to identify some of those non-negotiables, those things that we knew we really needed to improve upon in our existing programs that were sprinkled throughout the district. So, we agreed that a new math program, first and foremost, had to be aligned to the curriculum standards, and so, I'm sorry, the framework. And so, that's kind of a no-brainer, but it's important, because if you look at the copyright date of those standards, there are an awful lot of programs out there that just kind of stamped aligned to the Common Core and didn't make any changes, and if you looked at their copyright dates, we were told by several experts in the field to be very wary of copyright dates that are before 2011, because sometimes that means that the publishers haven't necessarily really aligned their programs. So, that was obviously a big priority. We wanted to make sure that the program developed the skills through the grades, that things, that the skills built and they were scaffolded nicely, and there was a scope and sequence that made sense to students as they moved through. We wanted it to be differentiated, to allow a lot of opportunities for variation in student learning needs. We wanted a common language, that was something that was very important to the teachers, to be able to know that a term meant the same thing in each grade, and so you weren't kind of trying to backtrack and figure out what the student was coming in with. We wanted the program to offer opportunities for modeling, problem-solving, in real-world contexts, to build perseverance in a way that students could fail, and then dig deeper and come back and try again without just being overwhelmed. We wanted a meaningful use of technology, and obviously, high-quality professional development. So the first thing we did was, we did some research, and the two documents that we used, one was the Publishers Criteria, and the other was a rubric that we modified just slightly. The first document is a very comprehensive review of the major shifts of the Common Core, and it gives the reader an opportunity to know what to look for, and to know how those shifts are presented in textbooks. And then we used the Equip rubric, which is an organization that is involved with offering tools for educators to evaluate programs that will lead to career and college readiness, that's sort of the focus of that organization. I do have hard copies of both of those documents up here, after the presentation, after your meeting, if you'd like to come up, you can bring one home and snuggle up with a cup of tea. So, we initially had a list of 21 programs, this list was generated from mostly internet searches, and also programs that we had been using in the district. We used about a month, we read that criteria guide, we came back, and after reading that guide and looking at the programs in an initial review, we narrowed it down to nine, and this was a pretty easy process to do, because it was very easy to eliminate programs that we had learned about what to look for through that criteria guide. So, we decided to take nine programs and evaluate them and run them through that Equip rubric. So, we left for about two months, this was, we met in October and in November, and then we took our, everybody claimed a program, and in some cases, the teachers worked with partners and looked at a few programs, which was really effective, because then they were able to compare their notes. And that was nine of those. I also have a list of all 21 programs and the nine semifinalists, if you'd like to take a look at that. Out of those nine, we came back in January, and we determined that there were three finalists that everybody agreed were worth having somebody come in and give us some more information about. I also want to add that the teachers really, really put in a tremendous amount of effort, they called vendors, they got samples, you know, they called other districts that were using these programs, so it was, it was very, very thorough. So the three finalists were Math in Focus, which is sometimes called Singapore Math, that is the Singapore Math program, there is a program called Singapore Math as well, but Math in Focus is modeled off of Singapore Math. Eureka Math, which is also called Engage New York, that is a fully online program, and Envision Math 2.0, which is the Pearson version of their new math program. Was called, it was this kind of a Scott Forsman model, but ramped up. So, we got the dog and pony show, and we had live people to put on the Math in Focus and the Envisions, and the Eureka Math was an online presentation. So, they presented to the committee on March 9th, and after the presentations, we had another wonderful discussion. It was pretty easy to eliminate Eureka Math right out of the gate after the presentation, in part because, if you look at our priorities, one of the really important things is to get everybody together, and to have this nice, tight scope and sequence and building of skills, that the teachers felt that with an online program, the concern was that you still wouldn't know what other people were doing, and that we would lose that opportunity to have that common language and that common approach. We do use some of the resources of Eureka Math, it's online, it's open to anybody, so, you know, I mean, no program is perfect, and you always want to kind of have a lot of tools in your toolbox, but we decided that that was, we could eliminate that. So then it was down to two, and we went back and forth on the strengths and the shortcomings of the two programs, and then somebody asked this question. And this kind of stopped us in our tracks, because after the discussion we had, the question was, okay, do we want to learn how to implement a program, or do we want to be better teachers of math? And as soon as that question was uttered, everybody said, "We're going with Math in Focus, that will make us better teachers of math."
Gold star for that person. Yeah, really.
Okay, I'll out her out later. Actually, there were two of them, but, so it was kind of interesting, and I'll just, as an aside, the presenter of Math in Focus is the national presenter, and he taught math in middle school, and you could just see his enthusiasm. The presenter for the Pearson product was a wonderful gentleman, Harvard grad student, but he was an English teacher, and that kind of spoke volumes for the program. So, this is the team recommendation for, these are some of the key points, obviously, the alignment to the standards, there's differentiating opportunities, the lessons and units are designed so that it goes from whole group to small group to independent work, so teachers have an opportunity to really make sure that all students are progressing. There's a huge emphasis on problem solving, and Mary Hemian had mentioned your math little lesson that you had. That method is called, in the Common Core, it's called tape modeling, in Singapore Math, it's bar modeling, and so it was interesting when she and I got talking, and she is very thrilled about the potential of us going in this direction as well. Strong development of mathematical concepts and conceptual reasoning, there's a wonderful component where number sense, which is the foundation of everything, begins and continues K1 and 2, so every single, you know, year, every, every, beginning of every unit is really diving back down into number sense, so children come into that foundation, and then the bar modeling approach begins in grade three. Skills are scaffolded, there's a very robust technology component, all of the lessons and resources are online, they support students, they support teachers, and there's a parent support online as well. And they provide, I think, some of the best professional development offered as far as their plan, which is, it's not a, everybody's sitting in a room listening to somebody talk, there's an introduction to the instructional strategies, but then specialists are flown in to work just with the kindergarten teachers, and just with the first in to work just with the kindergarten teachers and just with the first grade teachers and just with the second grade teachers. And so, and they do this two or three times a year. So you're getting that one-on-one professional development, you know, at your appropriate grade level. You're not waiting to see how does this work for me. And there's a parent university so that we can provide some support to the parents as well. And obviously we felt that this would impact students in many positive ways, not least of which is that number sense strength, individualized instruction, the conceptual understanding, which leads to development of algebraic reasoning, strategies for problem solving, concepts to real world situations. And it's a wonderful model for the mathematical practices, which are kind of the keystone of the Common Core standards. These mathematical practices are what students are actually doing when they are learning math. And as you see, I put up the date because obviously the standards were approved in 2011 and these are the mathematical practices, but I couldn't resist and I put it on your same slide. This is the Singapore Math framework that informed the mathematical practices of the Common Core. And if you notice, the date is 2006. The, this country didn't start to examine the possibility of working. We began creating teams to look at a Common Core standard in 2007. So when the presenters tell you that the Common Core was really informed by Singapore Math, it really was. So we feel very confident that our students will gain the skills that we want them to have. These are some of the districts in Massachusetts that use this Math in Focus right now. We did reach out and ask for these names and with the exception of Redding and Waltham, the other districts are Level 1 or 2 district or have Level 1 or 2 schools in their districts. And now, the most important part is, are the team members. So we had obviously very good representation from every level and 10 teachers, three building principals. I was just simply the one that tried to facilitate it, but I yield to the knowledge of my colleagues. So at this point, I'd love for you guys to come on up and just let the team ask you some questions. No? Please? Just in case they have questions. Okay? Come on up. Come on down. This is Lenore from Chatham Elementary School. Megan, she's the English language teacher. Mary, grade four. Andrea, grade six. And Chris, grade five. So do you have any questions for them? Or we could just say thank you. Thank you.
The Math in Focus, from everything that you've presented, sounds very well researched. It sounds great. I'm just wondering how different it is from what you're teaching now and what you've been teaching like the past couple of years? It's just, I'm curious how much of a shift it's going to be for you, especially like, you know, I'm thinking of my son in elementary school and how he's being taught now and how much of a shift is it going to be for the teachers and the kids to shift into this method?
Yeah. I implemented this. I'm from New Jersey and this is my first year here. So I'm excited to be implementing it here at Montemoy. It was a smooth transition. We had a lot of support as far as professional development. This was back in my former district, so I anticipate, you know, the same here. Me personally, it definitely made me a much better math teacher. I've always taught primary grades, so we do teach all the subjects. Math was a subject that I didn't pay as much attention to as I did with the others. It was, didn't seem to be my area of passion. And then having this new program opened up a whole new world to me of teaching math. So I'm very excited to be doing it again. I mean, I'm speaking to a kindergarten level where it's usually manipulatives and hands-on and this program supports that completely. With the program, when we purchased it, it would be tons of manipulatives that the kids love to explore and then use for learning of mathematical concepts. So I'm excited to be, you know, having the opportunity to do that again.
From a sixth grade perspective, right now, there is no consistent program that's used at either elementary school or even in our own middle school. So kids kind of have varying knowledge when they come up in sixth grade. So I think having a consistent program that's taught in all the grades with a common language, similar diagrams will really give more of an even playing field. You'll be filling less gaps. So they have this person in third grade who did more on this versus this teacher in third grade. So I think that's really going to help us move forward and raise the bar for all children.
Previous programs, previous programs were more procedure-based, probably more the way we all learn math. And with the Common Core, everything shifted to a much deeper understanding. So when we shifted to Common Core, we all frantically tried to backfill and to get whatever we could to get that implemented in the curriculum. But we all did that in varying ways, with varying language, with varying vocabulary terms, with varying visual representations. So it's very disconnected at this point. So this would be very unified. And I guess some of the, the part for me, because while I'm also coming from a slightly different place, I was a first grade and then a second grade teacher and now I'm the ELL teacher. So I have this kind of two-sided vision to this. I can see it from kind of two different places. But what I liked about it is that it builds the concrete visual and then builds to the abstract and it basically allows for like a security blanket or a few security blankets for kids. So that a lot of these visual tools that the kids are using, young, they're literally taking them with them through seventh grade. They're just being used in different ways so that the kids are so comfortable using like that, the bar model. They've been using it since the third grade. They're still using it in seventh grade. They might be even using it into high school. So they, they become so comfortable using this that math loses that intimidation factor and that we have that consistency that Andrea was talking about that we're lacking right now.
So I love that we're moving to something very consistent with consistent language. I love that there's numbers sense and that we're doing all of that concrete at the lower levels. I get, I have two questions. One is, did all teachers of math, you know, K through seven, have a chance to look this over and approve it? Second question is, is this a sequential, you know, is this a mastery program so that when you teach a concept, you expect the kids to master it more like Chicago Math where you kind of expose, create a lot of frustration, go on to the next one and everybody's frustrated until the top kids get it.
Well, I think, I think one of the, one of the many strengths is that there, every chapter has a pre-test and a post-test. I keep saying protest. And unlike your traditional pre-test where you're tested on what you're going for, these, this pre-test is what you are coming in with the skills, the prerequisite skills. So I think that right off the bat is a real plus for teachers to know where their students are. With regard to, has everyone had a chance to see it? When we had our presentation night, we did invite teachers to come because it started during a PLC time, but it was extended. We didn't get a lot of other teachers other than the team, but I have been updating the educational leaders in the buildings. I believe we did have almost all the teachers from the middle school that were on the committee. And at the elementary levels, we've been keeping them updated and so they're aware of what we've been doing, what the strengths are. And then the materials that were shared, this group brought them down to their colleagues so that everybody could, could kind of look through and play with them.
So everyone in second, third grade and all of these grades that teach math had a chance to really look at the materials then? And did they all like those materials? Did you hear conflicting views or did everybody like it?
I think personally, the feedback I got was, we were so, the teachers really had such a need for a cohesive program that developed this conceptual understanding that Math in Focus, the approach does, that they were just thrilled to have, you know, a chance to look at. I don't think there was any negative feedback. It was all very positive. They were very open. Sometimes that happens when you're looking at new programs and you've got people on different sides of it and they like this. It was just a much, much more open and very welcoming process, bringing it back to the grade levels.
So I guess I'm fairly clear on the question about teachers looking at it, but I'm not clear on the question about whether the kids will leave frustrated or like they're learning a new language or whether they'll leave with them a day or two of kind of really understanding what's being taught.
No, I, there's true mastery in this program because it is not an inch deep and a mile wide. It's a mile deep. And one of the features that I really like is that when a student is ready for enrichment, they don't move on to the next concept, they take the concept and they go deeper with it. Yeah. Plus, just, just one comment about the English language learner. When Singapore decided that they were going to revamp their math because they, that was, that was where they were going to pour their efforts in, they have about four or five languages spoken in the country, so they decided that they would just create the program in English. And so every student became an ELL student. Mr. Russell?
Thanks Carla. Great effort everybody and it hot strikes me, we're in the midst of this going into the final four in basketball, attorney. And you guys are, for whatever reasons, though, our last three or four years of test scores, you're ranked number one. Math has been a high priority and it's a pleasure for us as a school community not to have to worry about budgets and cutting people and adding this and the other stuff that we have to go through. Instead, this evening on curriculum to me has been a real gift to all of us. My second reminder is as I sit here and you're the launch pad for this. And one, we're going to be in for a penny and for a pound if we're going to go K through seven rather than one year of K and next year we'll do one through three. So that's a great thing too, that the launch will be K through seven and our task will be to make certain we have the money to have that happen. Finally, it reminds me, I kind of go back to sports, but the Celtics are one of 30 NBA teams and they're the second youngest team. Like I said, half hour, who cares? But they're, they're young. As I look here, our starting team that did this research, you're going to be with us a lot of years hopefully. So you're going to help us train your colleagues as well as yourselves and at the same time the kids. And because of your demographic, whatever ages you're staring at us, you're going to be launching Montemoy Math. And I, I see that as a terrific thing as opposed to super tenor worried that out of the 10 staff or the five trainers, one and two or three might be leaving us because of retirements in another year or two. So that's a great, as I see that, it's a great thing to see here. So go get them guys. Thank you.
Does this get implemented?
Wow.
America. Shut up long enough. Does this get implemented in one fell swoop as opposed to kindergarten, first year, first grade the next year? How does this get implemented?
Well, I, I think as, as Mr. Russell said, we'd like to go all in. And one, you know, the, the program they do offer, they have an implementation guide so that there's a guide that's very specific to help teachers implement it along with what they're already doing. So, you know, that in, you know, along with the professional development, which is very well thought out. You know, we're going to be patient with ourselves this year and support each other and just jump right in.
Feel for the upper level, you know, five, six and seven, who are not going to have the advantage of three or four years of...
There's, there's five and six right here. We've actually had some of the samples for the year, so I've, I've actually used parts of it and the kids have really adapted quite nicely to it, you know, new models. But what Carla was referring to, there is a transition guide. So if you're teaching for the first time, the bar model, which is really introduced much earlier, they give you some helpful hints or ways to introduce it that really kind of fill those gaps quite quickly.
And you showed like where the year before, what they did, so how you can kind of fill in after that. And also see like where the kids are going next year. You know, once they leave me conceptually, where should they really be?
You know, prior to arriving in Andrea's room.
Was there any, was there any input from high school teachers?
Yes, I, well, I have been in contact with the high school department head, math department head, who happens to be in a master's program for mathematics. And she was the one who came so enthusiastically because she learned this new way to problem solve. And low and behold, it's the bar model. It's, it, you know, and so this weekend when she was in her class, I had spoken to her once we finished our process and we were going to make this presentation to you. And she went to her, her teacher, her university teacher and kind of picked her brain and everything was very positive, great idea. I mean, Mary's thrilled about, about this because she sees the value in it as well. I do have, in addition to those resources, I do have two articles from Educational Leadership that put out two articles on Singapore Math several years ago. So I've got a lot of stuff that you can come up and grab and take home and read if you're, if you want to get a little more sense of it. They're not very long.
I just want to say that it's great that you guys all were able to come to a very quick consensus on what you liked. Because I know that the initial plan was to kind of look at possibilities for next year and to go ahead and say, no, wait, this is, we like this one and we find this is going to fit our needs K through seven. It's great to move that process along to get the kids going. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I was just curious how much you started to either formally or informally introduce these concepts already, if you have at all?
I've been using bits and pieces all year because I've had them since the summer. We've had sample copies, so I kind of slide them in here and there and since I create most of my own worksheets at this point, because we don't have a program, the kids don't know what is coming from where.
That's what I was wondering. That's part of the reason I was wondering.
I've been doing the same, using some of the materials that are there. And with the manipulatives that I already have, implementing it that way. I like the critical thinking component in the Math in Focus also. So I notice my kids are responding well to it, just having them think and see it in a different way. So ever since we decided that this would be most likely the one that we want to go with, we've been trying it out with them and they're really responding well.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
For, for the materials that we're getting, I'm just assuming there's a textbook for each teacher and at least at some grade levels, manipulatives and I'm guessing that the divergent learners will be addressed in the textbook for the teacher or I'm not sure.
So there are, there are consumables, there are, you know, there are workbooks that students have, have at all grade levels with this program that we would be putting into the budget and buying again, which is, I think, one of the conversations that I know that I've had with the school committee, the want, you know, like, you know, we've heard that some teachers don't have the book or the same thing and they're, you know, making copies of this and copies of that. So, you know, so there'll be a common consumable book that the students are using at each grade, at each grade level that again, we'd be building into, you know, the budget for, for next year and future years.
I love it that our teachers don't have to start from scratch and developing the curriculum and everything. So it's great.
Then just to, to sort of touch base on other things that people have raised, you know, we, you know, we've talked about this concept of, you know, reverse engineering, you know, looking at eighth grade as, as algebra or trying to get to that, you know, most... most kids ready for algebra. This would take us, it would take us K through seven and really set us up so that ideally, the students are coming out of seventh grade, heading into the high school, ready for, you know, ready for an algebra curriculum. You know, so, you know, so that's, you know, that's where, you know, where ideally, we want to have the, you know, the majority of our students get, you know, get to over the long haul to kind of address. Have we been working with high school, not so much other than that we know what the target, what the target is where we want them to be, to be in eighth grade. To get to one of Terry's comments, at the end of the day, for Katie and I and the rest of the folks here at the table, it's, it's, how do you go implement this? Because this isn't, it's, it's not free. And we already have a budget. And as Nancy said, the, the, the vision, as we were looking at this, was, you know, thinking piloting. And piloting is one thing. And piloting sort of, do we start in K1? You know, what, what couple of grades are we looking at? Or do we, you know, and, and to the credit of the group, you know, they felt this is the direction that we should go, as opposed to pilot. So, you know, so that, you know, that conversation was going on while we were last meeting as a school committee. And, you know, so right after that conversation happened, the following Monday, Carla and I and Katie were meeting with the people from the publishing company to discuss what Math &amp; Focus would actually cost us to implement as a district. And then, to borrow from, from one of our select persons' vocabulary, Katie asked them to sharpen their pencil a little bit.
[laughter]
They, they sharpened their pencil to, to about $100,000 and, and, and came back. So, so what we're looking at is, is essentially an all-in implementation cost when it comes to text and consumables for next year of about $150,000. Okay? And that's, that's 150,000, we didn't budget. We have, we have a way here. And above and beyond $150,000 is $60,000 of professional development to support our teachers implementing the curriculum and, and to launch this right. Not to go and say, hey, we have a new math curriculum, have at it. But to go and bring in, you know, to bring in trainers to go and make sure that the implementation of this curriculum is done right. And that we see this, this go and blossom in the school district. So, I pulled together the finance subcommittee, minus one, who was, I still, oh, I still, I was emailing Nancy to, you know, to just sort of talk about strategies on how we can go about this. Because at the end of the day, we have, you know, we have two towns that are heading towards town meeting, expecting a certain assessments coming, you know, is coming their way. So...
Now they're expecting them to be lower.
Well, and, and the, the way that numbers have been looking and breaking, it looks like that, that the governor's numbers are going to have this, have the schools supported a little bit more from Beacon Hill to the tune of almost 200, almost $200,000. We've been clear in our conversations with the select boards that, that if we have a windfall coming in, in the form of the governor's numbers, that we would use less excess and deficiency. And, you know, so the concept that I have shared with the finance subcommittee is that this is an appropriate use of excess and deficiency. It's, it's a, it's a one-time cost. You're, you're not hiring staff. You're, you're investing in the district over the long haul. And, you know, so today, Katie and I were meeting with our town managers and finance directors. And I was reminding them of the conversations that we've had at budget time all along and where, where the numbers are. And that, you know, that our intent is to, you know, to, as, you know, as we look forward, implement a math curriculum and if we need to, to use, you know, to use excess and deficiency to, to launch one fell swoop, not to baby step in with a couple of grades here a year, but to, you know, this is really a critical need for the district and something we should go and look at launching, launching altogether. So, you know, so they heard, they, you know, they fully understand why we would want to go this way and also understand why, you know, this is, this is a good use of that type of, of that type of money. So, so as we get further along, we'll know how the governor's numbers break. If the governor's numbers break less optimistically for us, and, and I think we can, we can look further into this. We don't need to buy it all at once. We can, we can get all, get it, get it all at once. But the publisher will work with us to spread it out over three years if we need. So we can go all in and, you know, in one year, or we can stretch, or we can stretch it out. I think just kind of look at what's, what's fiscally right for us as we, as we move forward. And the numbers will get a little clearer for us as, as time goes on. But I, you know, but at the end of the day, as a, as a administrative team and as a school committee, you know, our job's to kind of come up with the money. You know, so it was this nice conversation that happened. It's like, okay, this is, this is curriculum that teachers feel will help them teach math better. And I said, look, at the end of the day, it's on me and us to go and support them doing good work in classroom. And so that's where, that's where we are on the financial picture as we look forward to this.
So, if we choose to basically pay the majority of the upfront money with the additional money from the state, from the excess and deficiency fund, what will be the, the cost going forward? I mean, the workbooks will have to be repurchased.
I think, if I'm correct, looking at the proposal, I think it's about roughly a $30,000 a year ongoing cost, that, that's what the consumables would be each year with this, this program. And, you know, I, I think that that would save Andrea running to the Xerox machine and having $30,000 of Xeroxing costs, or whatever it might be. And whatever potential copyright infringement might be going on when some of those Xerox signals.
You know, to keep in mind that it's $30,000 spread over K through seven, so it's not...
No, I'm just thinking in terms of budgeting that we don't want to use excess and deficiency for the next year's $30,000 and the next year's $30,000. We need to certainly have budget in future years for the parts that are going to be ongoing.
I appreciate all the budget considerations. I had all those thoughts. I have a question for you, Carla. Since we're doing cross-curriculum teaching, will gym teachers and everyone be brought into some of the understanding of this math, where they could use some of that? I don't mean all of the details that the teachers who teach math will be doing, but some of it, so that they can further any detailing of math they might do in their areas?
Well, I, I think as, I mean, our, our goal as a district is to find those natural intersections. So I think that we always want to make sure that we find ways to support the learning. I think initially, personally, we need to target our professional development with those who are actually in the trenches, you know, doing the work. And then, once they become the experts, then we can share their wealth and knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll leave the, I'll, I'll put a little buffet over there with all of my materials if you'd like to get them at, at the end of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your...
Sorry.
Oh, my meeting must be almost over, huh?
Right.
Next on the agenda is concession stand building.
We don't prove the math program, I won't be able to... We have to get our computers to understand that word. It's always, it's always caught by spell checkers.
She made it sound like she did.
Wow, all right. We built it.
We built it. We were busy last weekend. So, so we're, you know, we're coming to the end of a project. And the, one of the last things that we need to look at is the concession building. So, I have been working with the, with Mount Vernon Group. They have donated time to create stamped architectural drawings for the layout. I've, I've got one that would show you where the bathroom stalls are in this, but this is just much more interesting to the 3D, you know, what it would look like if you're standing, you know, standing on the field and up there. So, the concept is that we have a concession stand that would have food service area on one side with a little, a little overhang to protect, protect folks from the elements along with, along with restroom facilities. And then on the far side, there would be a garage door that would have storage, you know, that we could store the gator that grounds, you know, that grounds the field or some tracking field supplies in there. So, we are at that point where it's time to go launch into a fundraising campaign for the building. You know, my understanding is that, that the, the want was to have this be a community build. And, and, you know, we wanted to first be sure that we get a, you know, get drawings generated for it so that, you know, so that we know how many two-by-fours that we're going to need and, and have, have that piece of it all set. So we've got the architectural drawings. Now we've got the, the sort of color picture of what it would look like, including a plaque that we can, you know, talk to people about, you know, how, you know, we can come up with a, a plaque that validates the donors that helped get this to where, where it is. The building, you know, the building itself all-in is roughly about a $219,000 project. Of that, the building project has already funded $135,000 worth of stuff. So the slab that's out there and having that slab connected to utilities and connected to the wastewater treatment plant, or the wastewater system for this building, that's already been done. So, you know, so the electric and plumbing stumps are there in a, in a slab and there's site work that's, that's happened around that. It's really at the point that we're ready to, to go to our community and say, hey, you know, we need supplies for, for two-by-fours and, and nails and bathroom fixtures and tile. And, and then work with our community members that have skills in construction and plumbing and electricity to, to get it put together. So, so we've, we have $7,000 of architectural time that Mount Vernon Group, our architect on this project, has donated towards this. We have $12,000 already that has been offered to us through Cape Cod Corporate Bank and Cranberry Festival have, have provided some money to get us going. I've gotten our project manager to do a breakdown of what's really left to do. We, we have about $28,500 worth of, of framing supplies and roofing to actually get it to look from the outside like that. And they estimate that we would need to have about $15,000 worth of donated labor. So, so if we were to, to raise another $28,000, we could have it from the outside look like that. There just wouldn't be a kitchen to walk into or bathrooms to walk into. But from the outside, it would look good. And, and then we would, we would need roughly an equivalent amount of, of money to raise. That would be a combination of plumbing fixtures and, and electrician and, electrician plumbing and tile work, time, labor donated. So, you know, so we're about $65,000 of combined labor and, and materials away from completed project. So, I just want to, we won't be doing a door-to-door fundraiser, which is the, one thing that I'm supposed to come to a school committee and get permission for. But I just want to, just ask the committee if I have the thumbs up to, to start a fundraising campaign for the concession stand. And just at least give you a visual on what we're, what we're looking to put in out there.
What would the fundraising look like?
I, I think the fundraising would, it would look like, you know...
Biggies. It looks like this.
You know, I, I think there, I think there are families, there are families that, that we have already at the high school and families that are going to come that, you know, I can speak for the carpenter household. For the next six years, I have kids that are going to be using that field and this facility. And I, I look at it that I, I can, should be pitching in here. And if we have another like 100 families that are pitching in, you know, just a little bit, we can, I think we can get there fairly quickly. So it's, it'll be sort of an appeal to, to the, the community. And, you know, not just, you know, not just the families, but the greater community to, you know, to support an effort. And then reaching out to, to those who, who have skill to say, okay, we've, you know, we've raised the, you know, roughly $28,000 that are needed to get it to look like this. You know, and then say, you know, we're, we're now ready to build. Come on down one weekend and, and over a period of, hopefully, over the course of the summer, we can start to have this look closer and closer to, you know, to a completed project. And, you know, they did something quite similar as they finished the Nauset Field and put in the, you know, their concession stand and bathroom facility there.
Seems as though if we could put either bricks on the ground or plaque or something that identified, you know, people. I, I like the bricks because each one is worth so many dollars and they could get bigger or whatever. But people love that kind of thing.
It's already, it's already paved.
Yeah, it is, it is already paved, which is why I just asked them to at least, in the schematic, add a, add a plaque. But, but yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look into some sort of acknowledgement of those who...
I think...
Any other questions?
Thumbs up.
I, I don't know if there's a motion needed, but I highly agree.
Well, it's just a not necessary vote, just a consensus that this is a good thing.
I think it's a good thing.
And I, I don't want to have you say, hey Scott, what's this fundraising flyer that just went out to families saying, you know, we need to raise $65,000 in, in donating labor or materials. Who wants to buy the urinals?
I think that's perfect for me.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
We had something that we, I don't know if it's a policy or, there was something we discussed a while back about advertising. That would be a separate thing, right? Or I'm not sure how this works together. No, if this donation is just a donation, it's not like putting up break signs or anything like that.
We, we do not have a policy that talks about signage at the stadium. It's, it's something, I think it's something down the road that the school district might want to look at. And I think once we, if, if I was looking at how other school districts have handled this, when we get a well-established all-sports booster program, you know, we could look at, you know, do we, do we allow signage around the stadium? And if so, how does the school district regulate that, you know, that signage? I, I think it can be tastefully done and not all school districts do it. My, my former school district militantly didn't want to have any sorts of signs around the stadium. And it was fine. It, it looked very similar to what our current stadium does. There's no sign... There's no signs around it. If you go up the road to the sports complex at Nauset, I, I have no qualms with how, the choices that they've made. You know, so many of the larger establishments, you know, as you, as you, you know, head up Route 28, have, you know, have a sign that, you know, that's advertising their restaurant or their business with an understanding that, that there's, you know, there's a certain amount of money that's coming back to support the, the program. And, you know, so it's, it's choices communities make. And, and I, I'm all for supporting, you know, community partners, so...
You get M and M to pay for it, just put another M in the field next to the one we have.
And, and I think we have to keep in mind, you know, we have, we have Cape Cod Community, we, sorry, the corporate bank of Cape Cod has, you know, has donated $10,000 towards this project and should, should get some recognition in terms of signage there as well. So, that's, that's too calm. But now we've got a picture that we can say, "Here's what you're, what you'll be donating towards."
It's not what I pictured, it's nice.
Yeah, I love shark bait.
Next on the agenda is scar, charter school resolution.
So, there are, there are two resolutions in your, in your package. The charter, the charter school resolution is one that I discussed with our, with our teachers association. So, the MRA came to me to, to discuss that they were putting together a resolution to put forward to our state legislators to say, "Please, you know, please, don't, don't lift the cap on charter schools," and why. I, I suggested to the MRA that, that if I would be comfortable bringing to the school committee a parallel resolution for the school committee. So, the, the resolution says, you know, "Whereas free public schools avail, uh, excuse me, whereas free public schools available to all students regardless of income, ability, need, or English language proficiency are foundational to our democracy and all the, all of our students deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child, providing enrichment and addressing social and emotional needs in addition to core academic subjects. And local accountability for our public schools is necessary to ensure that schools are responsive to the needs of their communities. And the Monmouth Regional School District is losing $1,8495 to Commonwealth Charter Schools and Public School Districts across the state are losing more than $408 million this year. I should say this year alone. A, a loss of funds that is undermining the ability of school districts to provide all students with the educational services to which they are entitled. And Commonwealth Charter Schools are often approved over objections of majority of the community residents and their elected officials and are not accountable to local elected officials once they are approved. And Commonwealth Charter Schools often fail to serve the same proportion of special needs students, low-income students and English language learners, as the school districts wish they receive students and often use high-suspension ways to drive out students they do not serve. And the Commonwealth Charter School system is creating separate and unequal opportunities for success. And lifting the chap on, the cap on charter schools would greatly worsen the problems listed above and lead costly and divisive two-track school systems. Therefore, it resolves that the Monmouth Regional School Committee opposes lifting the cap on charter schools. And this is, you know, there's legislation that's, that's currently being entered about that, that potentially would expand the number of charter schools that, that exist within the state. And the challenge, I think, particularly on Cape Cod, is an expansion of charter schools, particularly in a region of the state where there's already a decreasing school age population, just puts in conflict, you know, we just built a new high school and it would be taking, you know, taking seats that we have here and just spreading the educational dollars in this area of the Cape between more seats when there's already a diminishing number of school-aged children. Yes, I think, I, I think in an area of the state where you have that deep, that, that sort of continuing decline in school-aged children, it even magnifies the, the challenges with, with expanding that charter school cap. So, the, the MRA was just hoping that the school committee would join them in a sort of parallel resolution that we could send to the legislatures in tandem.
Personally, I'm very supportive of this. And I think on Cape Cod, more than any other place I'm aware of in the state, we have school choice and the charters were developed for that purpose. And we, unlike other places, we, you know, parents can opt to take their children to not east surrounding towns. So, you know, personally, I'm very supportive of this.
Any other comments? Okay, and the second resolution?
So, Sharon had pointed out that the, that the...
Are we allowed to have that since it isn't on the agenda? The second resolution? The second resolution wasn't on the agenda?
Well, it's combined with this one. Would you care to not talk about the next one, please?
I would like to talk about it. I requested it, but it is a separate resolution. I'm not sure what exactly the, well, I thought that we covered what's on the agenda and unless something is...
Point of war, please?
Go ahead.
It can be covered under the superintendent's report.
Okay, fine. I, I, I thought we were under reports and discussions, so I'm, I'm sorry.
You can move things around within the agenda.
Okay.
Great.
Move this to your area. Any other question, any other comments on this resolution? It will be up for an action item in our next meeting. The next, the next item actually should be down under action items, not under reports and discussions. So, we will forego that until we get to action items. Next item is subcommittee reports. Cafeteria charter policy, second reading. It was noted last time that, that there was some hesitancy in having the principal being the strong arm of the law. And with the wording in, in this, in that regard, the principal or his or her designee is in place so that they aren't necessarily the person who's the strong arm of the law and could actually shift it towards the business department, if that's the case. Rather than breaking this all down and starting from scratch, I think that covers that concern. But it doesn't necessarily have to be the principal.
Actually, in our committee meeting, we had discussed briefly that possibly the school nurse or guidance counselor or somebody might know a particular family very well and be, because it, I'm not seeing as particularly so much as the strong arm of the law as helpful, you know, trying to work with families. Do they have something they'd like to tell us about that maybe they'd particularly rather tell the school nurse than the principal, I don't know. So, we had that, that, or designee might be helpful.
Yeah, or, just to follow on what Sharon's saying, our intention was not to have somebody in a strong-arm position, but that having a designee as a possibility instead of the principal, him or herself, would make it more of a friendly process, a less threatening process to, you know, the person that had the debt or the family that had the debt. That was the, the thought. Does that make sense?
I think sometimes that puts a bird on the principal who has to maintain a friendly relationship with the family. And rather than saying, "You have to pony up," you know, they can still maintain that.
That was the idea in having the designee so that they didn't have to jeopardize that friendly relationship.
So, this being our second reading, I'll entertain a motion to accept this as a policy.
I'm open to accept this as a policy.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna be clear that the designee, I don't know, I guess to me, a principal's designee doesn't necessarily go to the business office. To me, a principal's designee would be in the building. So, I just, I just wanna be clear that it's, it's okay that the principal can outreach to somebody else and they, they would like to as a designee.
I, I think our, our team, our team discussed, and the way we would implement this is to have the business office be the, the designee here. And I think, I think Sam most eloquently, you know, sort of pointed out that, that from, you know, that from the principal and building perspective, you know, that their, you know, their want is to develop, you know, strong, you know, collaborative relationships with families. And, and we're a little concerned that, that, that the principal calling, you know, might compromise, might compromise that. Not that we don't want the business office to have collaborative relationships with families too, but, but, but we already have the business office when it comes to preschool tuition. It goes through and, you know, reaches out and makes those policies. It would be, it would make more sense to have it, have it fall at help of the business office.
I'm, I'm not against that, but it shifts the tone of what we're going to do. Basically, up until that point, they've got this sort of faceless person who is the food services director that they don't have to have any relationship with at all. So, their first opportunity to have somebody caring about them was the principal or designee. And I'm not, you know, I don't know, you get into problems if you don't have things standardized. But, but in some of these situations, it's maybe, may be helpful to have someone talk to them if you have some inkling that there is a, something going on that they, it might be helpful to know about or to offer an outstretched hand. So, my only concern is where will that be?
Yeah, we were thinking that someone who might have a personal relationship with the family would be able to flush out if there was a need there as opposed to someone calling from the business office or the food service director.
I would kind of look at it as that if that situation's happening, it's not just happening for the lunch payments, that there would be some sort of indication elsewhere that maybe the schools would have that conversation anyways. You know, it might not just be a financial thing and that might lead to other conversations with the teacher and the guidance counselors. And so, you know, to understand your point, that it's not just a call from the business office, although it, it really could be a call from the business office at the $15 mark, you know, so it, it could even back up to there. So, I understand what you're saying and I, I don't know if it would necessarily be just a lunch issue. It might be something else going on with the family as well and it might be noticed elsewhere than just in the financial lunch issue.
I think it might be. I think often it could be.
But many times it can't be.
Well, right.
You know, I mean...
Every situation is different.
Right.
Wouldn't, wouldn't say designee cover some of the concerns here. So, in the smaller schools, not that Sam's school was small, but Chatham Elementary, there might be a chat with a guidance counselor. And maybe at that level, the teachers know the kids and families well enough for the principal to make a decision. Yeah, I wouldn't particularly wanna lay it on a guidance counselor too to be the phone caller, but work that out there. If in fact, and I haven't, I, I looked at them, but I don't know what the dollar price is, but at some point, it was 20 or 40 bucks. You know, the neutral side is, eh, I don't know, if I, I prefer to get a call from the business office rather than my principal or guidance counselor because it's out of the home. In other words, it's to my home, but it's not at the school. And maybe that would be a little bit more something that that person would say, "Okay, hey, thank you, I'll get right on that." And it's, you know, at some point, they've been reminded before with no, no result. And so, at some dollar figure, the business office calls and said, you know, "Could you help us with this?" It takes the onus off of the guidance counselor or the principal. And let the principal make the decision initially. We should just go for a call.
When it says that, you know, or designee, to me, that means, it doesn't mean that the principal or whoever has to designate a person whose job that always is. It's done on a case-by-case basis.
Right, right.
By having it open-ended, then, as you say, maybe this particular parent already has a relationship with the guidance counselor. So, that principal would know that, say, you know, "You're the right person to talk to." But leaving it open-ended like that, I think, obviously, everybody's concerned.
But is it being left open-ended? Because it sounds like you're saying that you guys have already spoken and now you're putting a policy where it goes straight to the business office, which sounds different than what we talked about in here.
It's not necessarily that it will go to the business office, but the principal adds that...
Can Scott clarify that because he made that comment?
Well, I, you know, I, I, I think that the business, that if, or if we're having the school district step in at some point to be bill collector, that's, that's, that's what, that's where the business office is. We also have, you know, for, you know, for all students, there's, there are conversations that are happening amongst administrators, teachers, guidance counselors about what those needs are. And, you know, so, yeah, there's, there's parallel conversations that happen. You know, so I, I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. I think when it comes to, when it comes to, you know, you know, do you need, you know, do you need to help or support to get on, you know, free reduced lunch or is there a fiscal need that we don't know of? I think those frequently, I think that's the phone call that's happening from, you know, from, you know, from the counselor or from the principal or assistant principal. If it's, you are now 30 days delinquent on your, you know, on your money and, and we know that that's not what's behind this. That's where, you know, it comes from. You know, those are the calls that are coming from the business office. So, it's, you know, I think it's kind of a both and on this.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified.
It could be that the school nurse and the guidance counselor gets a copy of who these are happening to. I just, having been a school counselor before, it's very enlightening to know. The, the point isn't, you know, and I think nurses would generally feel the same way, that it's a flag that we might need to watch them, it might not be. It might be purely a matter of money.
We have ongoing conversations with the, the principal and the business office. And we, and we have, you know, lists of names. And I can only speak to the practice that we have in place with our pre-Cape, preschool tuitions. And I think if you remember a few years ago, we came to you because we had a couple of concerns about when we were first charging pre-Cape tuitions and having to collect. And, and we work very, very respectfully with families. And, and if somebody has to pay $10 a month, we work with them. But we, we have administrative team meetings. We just had a topic of, of the families that are in the minors in the cafeteria and, you know, speaking specifically with, one-on-one with principals. And, and they know which ones that will indicate to me, you know, "Let me just, let me talk, you know, I'll take care of this one" or whatever. So, it is a very, very collaborative and we're not, we're, you know, we're not bill collectors in the worst sense of the word because we also know that they're extenuating circumstances. But we also know that we can't just let it be because we're not allowed to just do that unless we have a line item in our budget and we wanna fund this, so...
So, I could just give you a example. One of the last three years, I had... One of the last three years, I had somebody tell me from this district that the partner who was providing the income for the family had just gotten involved with heroin recently, or they just found that out. All of a sudden, there were no vehicles, there were no, there's not, no access to anything. Who, is that person more likely to tell? And that's, you know, that's happening. But there's lots of other things happening besides that. It's, this is the intent of the policy committee, is to try to make sure that people that have situations like this are really cared about and more than just the, you know, you owe twenty dollars. And a lot of them, it's just they owe twenty dollars.
And I think that that's the intent and the communication with the principals that we have, because some, it might just be like, they must have just forgotten, and others will be, there's more going on, you know, let that sit for now. So there is a collaboration that takes place, but we also have a fiscal responsibility as well.
Of course, of course. You know, I'm telling you, somebody that's not a client or other people that even know that, but, yeah, I mean, we're talking in two different things. Yes, there's a fiscal responsibility, I don't know the answer.
You know, my thought, this policy covers just the general kids, K through twelve, who for basic reasons, they are shots of money, and they have been able to pay what they owe. Underneath that all, there are principals and guidance counselors, they can dredge out the circumstances. I mean, it's just, you owe us thirty dollars, then someone calls, you get thirty dollars. If there's a uniqueness like that, hopefully we'll catch it. I would guess at each building level, either through a guidance counselor or one, and I'm sure there are times in which no one catches it, because you don't know what's happening at home, but the policy probably is a reasonable attempt to do due diligence. And it would close up some cracks, and every once in a while, maybe a mistake is made, because you should have called rather than him. But by and large, it's a policy to try to keep the books clear of debt at the same time being sensitive. So if designee would help out, and the principal just make a decision as to who should make this call or calls, and some get filtered up to Katie's office, and others are handled at the school.
Right. I think we need to implement the policy, not be too worried about how to micromanage how they're going to implement it. If we get complaints or there's concerns, then your committee, your subcommittee can modify it as needed, but. I don't think we need to, at this point, decide, well, all right, let's add that a copy's going to go to the school nurse. I mean, I don't think we should get involved in micromanaging implementation.
Motion on the floor, and second it is to approve the policy EFDA, which is a collection of payment from a month for school meals. Follow the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sent in, so moved. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
All right, to just quickly loop back on to resolutions. Sharon had a suggestion, got some wording to us that came in, I think, after when we sent the initial agenda and pack it out, but.
Could I interrupt? I apologize, Superintendent. I have a similar concern that something like this, a resolution that the school committee is theoretically going to make about, you know, quasi-political issue, should be something that's specifically listed on the agenda. I don't know if there's any urgency to get this done tonight. You were the one that asked this, Yama.
I had actually asked quite a ways back for it to be on there. I had asked before, forty-eight hours before our meeting, so it could have been on the agenda. But then I had asked again afterwards. I don't think there's an urgency, and I agree, it should be an item on there.
I mean, I realize it's probably not all that controversial, but it is conceivable that somebody could come in at public comment and have an opinion on something like this. My preference would be that we not deal with this tonight.
Well, it's not a match night, we won't be voting on it, so it'll be, it could be presented to the committee, and then be on the agenda for next time to.
Except that we had had, our previous agenda, we had the cafeteria charging policy, which we then discussed, theoretically could have had input, and then did it on our second reading, so.
Well, policies take two readings.
Well, pretty much everything we do as a matter of, we pretty much, most of the things we are voting for, we've had two meetings to think about it, discuss it, come back, so. I mean, I don't care if we do this tonight, as opposed to having it on an agenda where it's actually listed.
I'll take the responsibility.
It's on the next meeting's agenda, so.
I'll take the responsibility to let the people that are doing this know that it will be on our, statewide, I'm talking about, that it will be on our agenda next time.
Just to clarify, Steve, Karen, the first one was a request to have this on the agenda to discuss tonight.
That is on the agenda.
Yeah.
So we can take this one for next week and vote it. The second one wasn't part of it? We will have that on the agenda to present, and then the following meeting will vote on it. So moving on, superintendent's report.
So just other updates in terms of this building and ongoing conversations that involve the, really the one last thing to wrap up is the HVAC system before we start the closeout process. So Terry and I were part of a conference call yesterday that involved the architect, the general contractor, and the architects engineer that specified the specs for the rooftop units. One of the things that I'm pushing for is to make sure that, you know, before we sort of close out that aspect of the building project, that, you know, that we're just assured that everything that was specified that could potentially mitigate these freeze-up issues that we've had in the past and/or electrical issues that we've had in the past on the rooftop units is addressed. So in terms of the electrical challenges, they have added these voltage and phase monitors, so if there's too much voltage that comes into a unit, or if the phasing goes out, these are, I think your typical power that comes into your home is two hundred and twenty volts, and these have double that. So for whatever reason, suddenly it goes from, you know, four hundred and something volts and drops down to two twenty, it would automatically shut off before the motor would be running on inappropriate electrical power to protect, you know, to protect the unit. Those didn't initially, these phase monitors and voltage monitors didn't initially exist in the units as delivered, but we're supposed to have them. So they've gone through and added phase protection to all the units, so we can kind of check off that piece of it. The other things that we were raising concern is the units, if you open, you know, and these, these are, you know, big units, if you see them from, you know, from, you know, how the parking lot look up, we'll see, you know, things that look, you know, the size of a, you know, for olaf containers that, you know, you see at a construction site. So there's a, you know, there'd be an access door that's, you know, the size of one of these, you know, these black, or these cork boards in the library that you're opening up, and, you know, some of the, you know, some of the specs say that the, you know, the walls are supposed to have two-inch rigid insulation. Well, you know, I may be a school superintendent who doesn't know a lot about construction, but when I open a door and it looks like a metal panel on the inside, something tells me there's not two-inch rigid insulation everywhere. So, you know, so we're going to be asking the contractor to explain why, you know, why certain parts of these cabinets clearly don't have the insulation that the specs say, and either fix it or justify why it's not needed there, you know. So other things that we want clarity on is, there's some sensor that would wrap around the coils that we have, that would sense if the air going over the coils is too cold. And there's long explanation as to why they went, and they use other sensors to recognize that the air is getting too cold, but we feel that, you know, that this one sensor would give us better protection, you know, against a freeze. So why isn't it there? And again, you know, leave it to the contractor to explain, you know, why you can't put one of these in, and these sensors that are tied to programming that clearly, you know, the sensors that they're relying on and the programming language they're relying on has failed now on us two consecutive winters, and we want to make sure that this gets addressed, so we have that piece. Last piece that we want to make sure that, we think we own in the contracts on the units, if something freezes, you know, the alarm goes off on the roof. But, you know, when something goes wrong in the fire suppression system, there's an enunciator panel that's, you know, that's where, you know, where people typically at. So, you know, so we believe that we own some sort of enunciator panel type of alarm that could be down in the custodial area, not on the roof of the building. So, so again, just trying to make sure that what we own that would provide protection that's there before these units become ours fiscally for the long haul.
So when you say explain to us, are they going to be meeting with you and telling you this stuff?
Yes, it's, right now, it's to, you know, to protect our interests, it's, letters get generated with requests for written responses back, you know, because everybody wants to make sure that, you know, that, you know, it's not just a he said, she said, that it's all formally documented, so. So, exactly, it all comes down to those lawyers. So the architects engineer will be generating a letter that ultimately would come from me as the superintendent to Fontaine Brothers, who was the general contractor, who would then be working with the subcontractor for the HVAC system and train manufacturer to respond and mitigate, you know, the concerns that the district has. So we're coming along, it's, there's forward motion, it's just, it's just not as fast as any of us would like. I, on, we'll say, more positive notes, I could have shared this in the recognitions, but I thought it really deserved some special note here. I sent to the committee a little kudos that Jenny Gao, who was our Mandarin teacher, deserves, and the work that she has been doing with her students, and Tara Berry, who is one of her second-year Mandarin students, finished third place in the Eleventh Annual Chinese Bridge Chinese Speech Contest this past Saturday at MS Boston. And Tara has qualified or gets out of this ten-to-fourteen day experience now in China. So, again, I think one of the reasons we really liked Jenny Gao and thought that she would be excellent to bring here is what she had been doing in her former school, that, you know, the level that she was able to get students to achieve in Mandarin speech. And it's nice to see that she's really delivering in that in year two. You know, so when, you know, when Bob Smeltzer was talking about a language program, you know, where can students get, you know, if they're here studying five years of Mandarin? And, you know, so this is, this is the beginning, and I really applaud Jenny and Tara. It's sort of the first of hopefully many, many kudos that they'll get in years to come. Also going on concurrent to this meeting, Kristen Hayden, who is our new middle school guidance counselor, has been going above and beyond to put together a program for our parents in the district. She was working with the DA's office to have a forum, you know, on cyberbullying and to really help parents understand what's happening in their children's lives online. And, you know, it's just amazing how much, you know, how different my own children's lives are compared to when I grew up, and just how vital in our children's minds, that cell phone and texting and that computer, I mean, it's, and, you know, so to, you know, the DA's office has a nice presentation that they do, and a forum on cyberbullying, so they were running two sessions of that tonight. Concurrent with the DA's presentation, Kristen also reached out to a number of community partners to have a community resources fair for parents that was really meant to look at what sort of family and social supports are out there, but also what sort of, sort of summer programming options there are in our community. So there's, you know, so there are a lot of different community partners that Kristen's reached out to, to have at that parent forum this evening. So I really appreciate the time and energy she put into this first forum, and look forward to many similar forums in the years to come.
I really wanted to go to that cyber, and I'm sure that a lot of parents, was that videotaped so it could be posted for the rest of us to see?
I don't, I don't know, I.
It wasn't videotaped, to my knowledge. There were about ten parents with K through five, and then I left to come here and I in the hallway, probably about another dozen or so. It was very impressive, the cafeteria had tables all the way around, and it was very difficult to leave and not get the whole breadth of it, but it's a nice, it was a nice resource that was put together.
Sounds great.
And I hope it'll happen again, and more parents will be able to take advantage of it.
And just the last thing, things to expect at our next meeting. One of the things we wanted to come back to you with is the school calendar. We came up with days for the kindergarten, or sorry, the elementary and middle school conference days, but one of the things we still are resolving, I think we've come up with a good plan, are the how to handle midyear and final exams at the high school. So I think Bill and I have been working on trying to meet the wants and needs that the students have and the teachers have, and I think have a good, a good concept. Bill just wants time to take, to move from paper and bounce it off his faculty before we bring it back here and get the teachers' input of it, but it would, it would bring back that midyear exams, half-days for some midyear exams, and again, trying to also make sure that students have time to prepare and teachers have time to go and grade these and get set for the new semester. We'll also have, by the time we next meet, a decision when it comes to the director of instructional technology or the interim director of instructional technology. So there are two finalists that have been put forward to me, and I'll be meeting with them as we go into the beginning of next week, and expect that by the end of next week, we'll have a decision on what direction we're going there. We've also, as Dustin Burns, the science department head, was sharing, you know, we're interviewing physics teachers and have had a number of physics teachers that they were talking to today, one last week. We've seen some physics teachers I think could be really good for the school district, and, you know, depending on that hiring, we'll have a vision for where, you know, where we go. I think Dustin was talking about how we'd like to see us go towards a physics first. To do physics first, we need two physics teachers, and, you know, so it's kind of a question of, do we see, you know, one of them that's right for our school district, or are there two that are right for the school district? So, you know, so if we find two, we go with the passing game. If we find one, we go with the running game. Yes, so, but, you know, but when we get, you know, at some point, when we get to a point where we have two teachers that can do a conceptual physics in ninth grade, that concept of doing a physics first, I think is the right direction to go for the school district, really enhance students in ninth grade having a very practical use of math in ninth grade, which I think will bolster their math skills. So it's, I think it's good all around, but again, it's, has us looking at staffing differently.
Has Deb Morgan been involved in the...
Has Deb Morgan been involved in the interim director of IT process?
Deb's been on a family medical leave, so she has not been in state.
Had you asked her or had she said she did not want to be involved?
Well, she hasn't, she has been out of state on a leave. And typically, while we consult with people that are that are leaving a position, you frequently don't have the person that's leaving the position hiring their replacement.
Well, I just wonder about getting some of her input, that's all. I didn't say that she should hire her replacement, but just that perhaps it would be helpful to have input, that's all. I have another question also. The district will be hiring an academic center coordinator. When will we be reviewing the job description so that we can actually post for that?
Well, the job description, I think largely was described by Bill tonight. And I've been talking conceptually about it at every budget presentation we've had. This has been on each budget presentation. The job description is also very much in a evolving stage. I think as we have a new director of student service come on board and as the high school team looks at what sort of tiered interventions we want to put in, I think it will be a job description that morphs to fit the need. But the concept is as Bill has described.
The question is, when will you, when will someone bring to the school committee for our review and approval the job description for this? It is a new district position and the school committee approves job descriptions for new positions. So, I'm just wondering when it will be brought here for approval?
I could bring the job description to you for the next school committee meeting.
Thank you.
And it will be, it'll be very much a job description in sort of draft form as, and I think it will be a job that evolves as we better understand how we can meet the needs of our students at high school.
Well, I mean, we have to have a job description in order to post for, you know, to look for somebody to fill that position. And in order to have a job description, it has to be approved by the school committee first. So, I just wanted to see when that was going to happen so we could keep the process moving forward. So, next meeting, okay?
I had a question about the calendar. You mentioned the calendar a minute ago. And I don't even know if this fits in with the calendar, I'm assuming it does. But a couple, a few teachers asked me how it was coming along with the possibility of the middle and high schools swapping time with the elementary. Yeah, and so I don't ever remember that coming up, but then I was late to that last meeting that we started early. So, I didn't know if that was part of that.
It's, I think it's different than the school calendar conversation, but it's a conversation that I was meeting this morning with the Chatham Elementary School School Council and parents were asking about that. I think we've talked about, we've talked about as we go into parent and staff meetings, again, sort of as part of vetting action steps for the strategic plan.
Yeah.
In April, and this is part of the conversation I had with the parents at Chatham Elementary this morning, was that I think that's an appropriate time. Because I think that start time, if I was to say, okay, where in that plan does it fall? I'd say it's in that school culture piece, you know, those. And I think for the thing that we heard along the process, the strategic planning process so far, is that elementary teachers and I would say many elementary parents, not all, but many seem to be in favor of an earlier start time for the elementary school. It's very much a mixed bag when it comes to students, some parents and some teachers on where the high school's start time. I think some are very comfortable with where it is now. The research out there is that a later start time, later than what it is now, that that flip actually makes sense. So, there's a lot, there's a lot in terms of the research there. You know, it comes down to some practicalities. And one of the, I think the reason that we landed where we currently are has a lot to do with how much time students miss class to get to certain sporting events. And we'll be going into, and I think this is, this needs to be part of the conversation with these parent and teacher groups. We'll be going into a different league next year. We'll, rather than traveling to Hall for competition, we'll be in the Cape and Islands and the need for students to get out of school and miss classes at the end of the school day to get to a venue is going to be reduced since the travel time is going to be less to get to near competitors. So, I think, I think from a sports schedule, we're better positioned to look at a later time. But we're also, we're also dealing with some of the history. I think, I think some teachers would say, okay, so let's move, let's move the elementary school to eight o'clock and say, well, something close to a seven o'clock start, that's not far off of what some of the Harvard schools were doing before we regionalized, which flies completely in the face of the research that later start makes sense. It's, you know, I think there's going to be a little bit of need to have the conversations and also educate at the same time.
But when you say have the conversations, to me, that doesn't sound like something that could possibly happen as early as this coming school year.
I think as long as we make a decision.
Yeah.
Implementing it is just flipping start times and then just making sure that we're working with the before and after school supports, you know, so that, you know, so that from a school and town perspective that we have families covered from 7:00 AM until 6:00 PM.
Right.
That we would just, you know, so we would want to make sure that Monroey Community Services in Chatham is working with us to provide coverage, that the park program at the community center is ready, poised to step in.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So.
Well, my question is related to what Claire asked earlier, so.
Follow up on hers. Here we go.
The broadside.
So, if all those stars line up, could it be next year? I don't think we got an answer to that question.
Yes.
It could be.
So, my question was, I haven't been paying a lot of attention to this. What is the title of that thing, academic what?
Academic Support Center.
Okay. So, what we're trying to do is hire a full-time teacher that might be background of remedial or special ed or something?
I think it, I think it could be, it could be anyone, you know. I think it's, what sort of, you know, what sort of strength do they have at teaching those organizational skills? But I also think that a lot of times it's the right personality. It's somebody who will engage your upper level students to pull them in to work with you and at the same time engage and complete other of the spectrum so that they're wanting to come and get support. It takes the right person. So, you know, so I understand the want for, that's not a job description. Last Wednesday, I believe it was, I sent Jen Police and Rick Gifford up to Wayland High School because I think they have an exemplary academic support center in place that has been firing on all cylinders for some, you know, for some time to have them see what it could be. And it was, and they met with Carl and I, Bill and others to sort of report back what they saw and what they, you know. So, you know, so what that job might look like was evolving very much there. And that's happening without, I think, one of the key players at the table and that's Melissa McGuire. When she gets here, has lots of experience in putting, you know, these tier two, tier three supports in for students. What happens, you know, when they start to struggle? Where do, you know, the supports get put in place before you turn around as the school system and say, hey, I think the student needs to be on Ed Plan or 504. You know, what are we, what are we putting in place before you get there?
We are planning to hire a full-time certified teacher.
Correct.
Any other questions? Move on to action items. Budget assessment vote.
Okay, so I do apologize. It was brought to my attention that there's a $2,224 mistake on this assessment sheet. I feel confident that we, the two numbers that we gave, the number we gave to the town of Howard and the town of Chatham are the numbers that were voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the bincoms. And the $2,224 impacts the Chatham assessment. But as we, I indicated that these numbers are subject to change as the governor's numbers come further along. So, I, the transportation number for Chatham, based on the formula, should be 136,000. In my calculation, it came through as 134,000. But there isn't anything we can do about that right now. We'll have to adjust it in the budget elsewhere to make up for that. But I don't see that these two numbers that we are going to assess actually ends up what happens at town meeting. As you know, it changes as we go along. And the problem I have is that we're constrained with time, with the regulation of sending to the two town treasurers this amount of their assessment. So, I would still respectfully acknowledge that there's a $2,000 discrepancy, but that it overall, if we could still vote those assessment numbers is what we shared with the communities.
So, what do we, what's our motion to be, the first page?
So, it would be the number for the Howard's number and the Chatham number. And you could choose to do it broken down or just the total assessment number. So, that each number is correct? I mean, as those numbers that are, the totals are what each finance subcommittee approved at each time? So, I pencils have erasers, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not really understanding how we approve this when something's different.
Well, this, it's, the only thing that's different, well, what it is is that the assessment for the town of Chatham on this sheet should be $136,000 as indicated. And right now, we're assessing them at $134,000 based on current year chapters, transportation assessment numbers that before town meeting, those numbers are going to change. And our minimum contribution numbers more likely will change as will chapter 70. So, there are several moving parts still. And what we would have to as a group, it, the district would have to at this point pick up that $2,224 error that I've made. We couldn't assess it to the town of Chatham.
And our towns, our towns need to know what number to anticipate tomorrow. They need to provide Chatham a little blurb.
Right.
That goes in, in the warrant that heads off to the printer, you know, Friday.
And then on town meeting floor, the number can be changed anyways.
Lower.
Lower.
Lower, of course, yes, it's lower.
Right, right.
But it doesn't, this is, this is the number that we are giving them now to print in the warrant. And the actual motion will be read on the floor, noting if there's a difference than what is in the warrant.
Yes. But, but there is right now, if all came and everything stayed the exact same right now, the district would be under assessing Chatham $2,224. But our budget hasn't changed. The budget number's the same. As I said, the other pieces, you know, we could put $2,000 of more E and D towards it. But there isn't anything I can do right now because the Board of Selectmen and Chatham have already voted this number.
Sure.
I don't know if I'm imagining this or not, but it seems like something like this happened before and.
No, that, what happened before was the state changed the minimum contribution amount.
But didn't we assess the, didn't we have some kind of agreement that the following year would make it up?
That wasn't a math error, that was a change in the state formula. This is a good old fashioned math error. It's my mistake, I made a mistake, bottom line.
Say it one more time.
I made a mistake. That's why pencils have erasers. I'm sorry to say I didn't catch it before and I wish I had.
So, you need a motion, right?
Yeah.
So, I move that we approve the fiscal 2017 assessment between two towns as follows. For Howard, $24,058,301. And Chatham, $8,659,341. For a total of $32,717,643.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions, so move. Next is prior year invoice.
So, this was wrapping up, as I mentioned to you at the last school committee meeting, we were bringing the two towns leases for the copy machines together. And there was one machine that was tied over and then we got an invoice for the 12 month period of time. But when we just went to pay the invoice, we noticed the total had three months that were back from April. It went from April 1st of 2015 to April 1st of 2016. So, I need your permission, April, May and June totaling $434.04 really should have been part of last year's budget, but we didn't get the invoice. So, the date of it is March 1st. And it covers three months of the prior year. And as you know, I have to get permission to use current year money to pay a prior year invoice. And that's what that is, $434.04.
I move that we approve the WECO invoice that's been presented to us in the amount of $434.04.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is this going to occur next year as well?
No, no, we, no.
You changed it with them or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions, so move. Last item is the superintendent's goal, which we discussed at our meeting last time. I want to take a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the year 215 to 216.
So move.
Second. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Abstentions? So carry. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
No, exactly.
No, nothing special.
It's eleven o'clock at night.